Firstly, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. We have some very important matters to deal with on tonight's agenda and we appreciate that these are of great interest to the public. Members of the public are welcome to be present to observe the council meeting. However, I would stress at the outset that they are not allowed to participate or disrupt the council meeting. I would also mention that all members should find on their seats a supplemental paper included in the items circulated at meeting pack which relates to the proposed amendments on the Budget Report, item seven of tonight's agenda. Item one, does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 5th of February 2014? Apologies?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Ahad, Allison, Kemp, Myers, Powers, White and councillor Sharon Patterson.
Any more? Item three, official announcement. As tonight's city council meeting determines council tax levy, I would like to remind members that the application of the guillotine will not happen until 9pm rather than 8.30. Item four, correspondence. We have received two letters from the right honourable Eric Pickles MP on the local government finance settlement and the new homes bonus. Does council agree to receive the correspondence? Without the hisses. Item five, petitions. We have received three petitions for this meeting. Two will be dealt with in the normal way, understanding orders, and there is one larger petition which has been submitted under the council's petition scheme. I propose to take the two petitions in the usual way before dealing with the larger petition. I'd now like to invite Alexis Fernandez to present a petition regarding open space at the former John Marley School in Westerhope.
We, the undersigned, call on Newcastle City Council to support concerned local residents in defending the green open space at the former John Marley School site in Westerhope, which is under threat from developers. We believe open green space should be defended for local people to enjoy and to tackle childhood obesity by giving children places to play safely.
Thank you very much. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? And now invite Liz Smith to present a petition regarding the position of a bus stop in Westerhope. Thank you, Liz.
We, the undersigned, request that Newcastle City Council put the safety of children and their families over the need to retain trees. We request that the decision to position a bus stop and layby in front of Rapidon Court is abandoned because in this position it will cause complete obliteration of sightlines for drivers exiting from Westerhope Village Nursery. A much better, a much safer position for the relocation of the bus stop is opposite Westerhope Methodist Church. However, officers have discounted this position because of the existence of trees. We request that their decision is revoked.
Thank you. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? Thank you very much. Item five C, we now come with the petition which has been submitted in accordance with the council's petition scheme. Under that scheme, any petition submitted to the council which has more than two and a half thousand signatories is to be the subject of a time limited debate at full council and the procedure to be followed is different to the normal rules of debate. The procedure is that the presenter will have five minutes to present their petition and then there is scope for council to debate the matter for up to 15 minutes before deciding on what action to take in respect of the petition. In order to keep to the 15 minute limit, each member's speech will be restricted to three minutes. I'll ask Mr James Bell to present the petition. You have five minutes, Mr Bell.
Because of my employer, although there is no direct conflict of interest with my council role, my employer asks that I withdraw from the meeting while these matters are being discussed.
Yep, okay. Mr Bell?
Hello. We are here to tell you that you cannot lawfully make bedroom tax decisions without inspecting every single property you think is liable for it. We have set this for months, back since the first decisions were made in March of 2013. Tribunal ruling after ruling is supporting this because the key precedents have always existed. No definition of a bedroom in the housing benefit regulations, you say this. The House of Lords answered the key issue in 2001, Ura Temp Ventures versus Collins, if you want to check it out. The key elements of the decision is that the usage of a room defines what it is, that any decision relating to room usage needs to address the fact of the matter and the facts at the time the decision was made. It's very simple. The Bolton Upper Tribunal ruling last month that a bedroom is a room either furnished with a bed or used for sleeping in merely follows the logic of the House of Lords' decision. Monmouth First Tier Tribunal and Liverpool First Tier Tribunals have now followed Bolton in deciding that whether a room is a bedroom or not is defined by its usage at the time any decision is made. Way back, wise lawyers said that there was no need for council to inspect properties before making bedroom tax decisions. They were wrong. Those same wise lawyers said that tenants would never win bedroom tax appeals. They were wrong. They then said that the Fife First Tier Tribunal decisions in September 2013 related to the peculiarities of a 16th century house conversion. They were wrong again. Now the same useless lawyers are telling us that the Bolton Upper Tribunal ruling has no significance for bedroom tax decisions. You need to get rid of them. You cannot make lawful decisions on bedroom tax liability without determining room usage at the time the decision is to be made. Your Homes Newcastle does not know about room usage in its properties. You don't know this unless you inspect every property before making a decision. And then you need to deal with room size. And tribunal after tribunal, whether tenant is properly prepared, is ruling that size matters. In concluding, I want to tell you that tenants need some answers to some very simple questions. Firstly, how many tenants have been shown to be 1996 exempt? We have been told that it is 80, fewer than 2% of bedroom tax tenants in Newcastle. This figure is not credible and we require the real number. What is it? Of the tenants exempt under the consequential provision regulations, a number will have received discretionary housing payments. Does the council attempt to recover that money? Three, council has granted discretionary housing payments to tenants who have appealed against the bedroom tax. In the letter granting the DHP, tenants are asked if they would like to withdraw their appeals. We regard this as bribery. We want you to stop this ridiculous attempt to hold up appeals. We want a commitment on this. So it is down to you. We can promise you one thing, we will continue to organise, we will continue appeals, we will make sure that you have absolutely no respite on the issue. You always have a choice. You can carry on doing the government's dirty work or you can make the bedroom tax unworkable. As I said, we can promise you one thing, we aren't going away. Smash the bedroom tax.
Thank you. Now ask councillor McCarty to respond, please.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you to Mr Bell for bringing what is, we think, on this side of the council chamber, a really important issue. As we said last time when similar petitions were brought here, the bedroom tax is a national government policy and while local councils are responsible for its implementation and have to follow the regulations that we've been given, as have been set out by the DWP, the city council has stated and agreed in a motion to council last year that it opposes the bedroom tax and we think it's had a disgraceful impact on tenants and residents across our city. However, we do have a legal duty to implement the bedroom tax in line with the guidelines that have been issued to us. Not to do so would have major implications, not least around the subsidy that the council receives from the government in respect of housing benefit. As we have said on many, many occasions, we encourage everyone who is concerned, who is in debt, who is worried about whether they're not being supported effectively enough, please come to us. Every individual is being seen on a case by case basis so that we can do as much as we can to support them and make sure that they're not destitute, they're not made homeless, that they're supported in the very best ways that we possibly can. We're constantly monitoring the situation. We also look at the legal judgments and we keep up to date with the issues that are emerging around the country in relation to the work that's going on in the court. And of course, that is also around the appeals that the Department for Work and Pensions follow through. Our legal services team are engaged in this work and we're confident that even though we don't really want to be doing it, we are implementing the bedroom tax lawfully. Decisions are made by first tier tribunals and individual cases around the country, sorry, and individual cases that exist around the country don't set legal precedent, several of those are currently in appeal. Bolton judgment is not a bedroom tax issue and the media are presenting it in a simplistic way and it simply isn't accurate. The Housing Act of 2004 does not contain minimum bedroom sizes and the Housing Act of 1985 allows other rooms, such as living rooms, to be taken into account when determining whether a property is overcrowded. Each situation has to be dealt with on a case by case basis. So the council with its partners, all its partners, YHN and in the voluntary community sector, are doing what we can and continuing to do what we can to help people who have been affected by what we believe is a disgraceful tax. If people are affected by that and Mr Bell knows about them, please let us know. In response to his specific questions, we originally identified in partnership with YHN and the DWP that there were in excess of 700 people affected by the glitch in the system. That's now down to just over 300. Those cases are being supported individually and more work is being done to support those individuals. Those are the ones with the mistake that the government made when they agreed the legislation. In response to your second question, our answer is no. We are not intending to recover the money that tenants have had in relation to discretionary housing payments. And in relation to the final query that Mr Bell put to us this evening, we have just had a bid accepted by the government, so we have an additional £861,000, which I think is a great credit to those who put that bid together to get that level of funding from the government and we intend to spend that before the end of March. And we will be bringing subsequent reports, Lord Mayor, to council, to cabinet and to council, to make sure people know about what we've done with that money, how we spent it and how many people who might previously not have been awarded discretionary housing can now do so because we've got such a huge resource. So, Lord Mayor, since this is not a matter for council, can I propose that council agree to receive the petition and that we will refer it to government? Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Is there a second for that?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to second the resolution that's been put forward by councillor McCarty. And just add a few comments to those of hers because we find ourselves in situations as a council having to deal with a whole range of situations with the bedroom tax that we really don't like having to deal with. And we know because we see people in our surgeries and we see people coming to seek advice from the council, the extreme distress and, in some cases hardship it is causing for many people, which is why I'm delighted that my party at least has pledged to scrap the bedroom tax should it win the next general election. And what we're looking for from the other political parties is a similar commitment to reverse this regressive policy. And Mr Bell alluded to the pre-1996 ruling and that just shows just one example of how the bedroom tax is a complete mess. The implementation of it, not only is it cruel, it's also been incompetent by the government. And finding a situation suddenly where the council, I mean, of course, we're going the extra mile to find all the people who might be affected by that judgment, but of course, many of the records dating back to 1996 and before that aren't computerised, they're held in paper records, so it's not as easy as simply pressing a button on the computer and expecting the answer to come out. And of course, as the deputy leader has mentioned, YHN has visited thousands and thousands and thousands of properties across the city, talking to people face to face about their situation, checking their situation and doing their best to help them to make sure that they have proper income maximisation support. And our offer to people in the city is if you engage with us, we will do our utmost to make sure that you are properly looked after. But as Joyce has said, the fact that we have won extra discretionary housing payments out of the government shows there is a very real need for hardship funds in the city. They are being exacerbated by the bedroom tax. And it would not be right of the council to encourage people to simply ignore it. What we want are people to engage with us, to talk to us and to come and say if they have an issue or a problem with the bedroom tax because then we can see what we can do to help. Ignoring it, or as Mr Bell and some of his colleagues would suggest, deliberately not seeking to pay it, simply creates more debt for people and gets them into more difficulty. That's not what we want to see. So, Lord Mayor, this is a policy issue for national government. I think it's absolutely right that we listen to the petition and that we refer it on for consideration. And in the meantime, we and colleagues will get on with doing our utmost to help people who are in a very real state of distress and poverty as a result of this invidious tax.
Councillor Faulkner? My case councillor Hoodart?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We do understand the concerns about welfare reforms and the ways that this has to be managed. The people who have to enact this legislation are in a very difficult position. We need to obey the law on under occupancy. We need to be fair to tenants and residents and those who are paying taxes and to keep them informed. And on this, I would actually say that YHN has done very well. As Nick Forbes said, they've been and visited people personally, they've set up special help groups, et cetera, and they have done better than many other councils that I could mention on this. They have to balance out the inequalities of the situation and take legal advice. We didn't create the crisis in funding welfare provision. It wasn't us that created the massive debt by irresponsible borrowing. The welfare bill has been off the clock for some years and currently still is. And we all have to help to close the deficit because as a country, we've been living above our means and living above our incomes. It is a shame that the protesters were not allowed to meet the cabinet members. YHN did agree to meet these protesters. I haven't got a lot to add to Joyce's proposal, but just to say, as a party, we've discussed this issue ad nauseam, but until we have a better alternative to managing the deficit and that can be brought in, we have to work with tenants, with the housing providers, the debt agencies, et cetera, until we can work out some sensible solutions. None of us like this. We're all very sorry that we're being put in the position of having to do this. And I support the proposal to accept the petition and continue to work in the way we have been. Thank you.
Does any other member want to speak? Anita Loa, thank you. Sorry councillor Loa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I don't want to repeat what's been said. I just wanted to make one suggestion if I could. Listening to what Mr Bell had to say, I think that there is a huge issue for people around the actual exemptions and the different things that are going on around the country and how other people are operating on this. I think we've been very proactive, both the council and YHN, in dealing with this. However, if we wanted to see a way to take this forward, I was going to suggest that maybe we could ask scrutiny if they wanted to have a task and finish group, or maybe even better would be to hold an evidence gathering day to look at the situation around appeals and maybe to hear from individuals to see if there's anything we could take forward from that or learn from anywhere else that may be of help. But that's all I want to say, but I think we've got to accept this petition and move on with it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion proposed by councillor McCarty agreed? No, no. No, no, sorry, that's all finished now. Councillor McCarty, do you want to reply here?
I just want to make two comments. I'm staggered by councillor Hoodart's request for us to look for a different solution as I'm sure my colleagues are on this side of the council chamber, because actually it's her government, her party in government that have supported this dreadful legislation. And in reply to councillor Anita Loa's proposal, I think it'd be a really good idea if scrutiny had time to have a look at that and actually if there's anything that our colleagues across all of the partners could add to what they're currently doing, I think that would be really helpful, it would be really useful to have another pair of eyes to have a look at that. But, Lord Mayor, just to reiterate our commitment to supporting individual families on a case by case basis, individuals and families on a case by case basis, to do everything that we can and spend the money that we've been allocated to try and protect as many families, as many residents across the city as we possibly can. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
So I will ask again, is the motion proposed by councillor McCarty agreed? Right, thank you very much. Item six, public address. We have received one request to address the council. I'd like to invite Paul Armstrong to address the council for up to five minutes regarding who are Newcastle City Council's customers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Armstrong. No. We're finished with this one now and we've moved on to a public address. There's a gentleman here waiting to speak to the council. You've had your chance and now it's his. Thank you, Mr Armstrong, again.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on the petition regarding the proposed development of the former John Marley School site behind the Eta Lane Police Station. The site has been used as a much appreciated green space for the last 20 years in an area bounded by major roads. The council has in 2013 produced a developer guidance note for 240 or more homes at this site, with the majority being executive style housing. This has been carried out in secrecy with no contact with the residents. In particular, there's been no consultation with those that live on the narrow access routes on Berington Drive and Wellfield Lane. The council has also designated an area a few hundred yards north as a neighbourhood growth area. If both sites are built on, then the entire east of New Biggin Hall will be built up to the A1 and the airport bypass. The council is of course aware that there are an estimated 3,000 children in Newcastle aged 2 to 10 who are classified as obese with a further 2,600 classified as overweight. These are amongst the worst figures in the UK. Where are these children going to play? On the footbridge over the A1 or on the verges of the airport bypass? And why is the One Core Strategy focused upon reducing the commuting distances of the middle classes but not on the health of our children? Can I also mention the council's own vision and value statement? The council will be an open, accountable, listening, responsive council and the council will put the customer and citizen at the heart of everything we do delivering services in a caring and sensitive manner. manner, sorry. Customer, question mark. Customers do not ask for representation. Customers do not have a choice to deal or not. The citizens of Newcastle are not customers, they are far more important. Should the core values be amended? Can I quote some statistics from the 300 page One Core Strategy final submission? The word sustainable appears 271 times, the word affordable does not appear, the word engagement appears four times, so it's in there just. Why do developers get more information than the electorate who you are supposed to represent? So in the interest of sustainable democracy, would the council write to the customers, citizens, taxpayers or electorate that live around the site behind the Eta Lane Police Station, explain your intentions and in particular consult with those that live on the access routes on Berington Drive and Wellfield Lane and engage and listen to their views in a caring and sensitive manner in accordance with the council's core values? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I ask councillor Forbes to reply. Sorry, I've councillor Bell in my case.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And a rather detailed question tonight, so I have preferred a rather detailed response. I hope it answers all the points raised. Commenting to point tonight is the core strategy, so some of this response does go back to the core strategy. The council's core strategy and urban core plan proposes a housing target of 21,000 new homes to be built by 2030. The city needs a diverse and high quality housing offer to sustain economic growth. In particular, we need mid-market family homes. This will stop an out migration to other local authority areas. In addition, we aim to provide affordable homes across the city. The government requires that the city provides a stronger evidence that can identify sufficient housing sites to meet the overall housing requirements. The council must identify sites capable of producing over 1,100 completions per year over the next five years and similar numbers in the future. We strongly support the development of affordable homes for the city and its residents. The need for affordable housing is covered in the core strategy and urban core plan. Providing a mix of types and tenures of homes in sustainable and thriving communities is at the heart of the plan. The plan sets a target of 50% affordable homes in developments of 15 or more dwellings. Originally, the council plan set out that there was a shortfall of affordable brownfield sites. This meant that approximately 7,500 homes would need to be built on green belt land. In 2013, we set out to identify further sites, some in council ownership, that could be used for new housing rather than built on green belt. As a result, the core strategy now identifies that 6,000 properties need to be built in the green belt, a reduction of 1,500. The council consultation on the core strategy has been wavering. The council has exceeded the requirements set out in the national guidance. The average length of consultation was recently adopted, the core strategy is of 26 weeks. We have consulted on six separate occasions for some 43 weeks. Since 2009, we have held over 150 public meetings, events and drop-in sessions. We wrote to every household in the city when consulting on the draft plan and again on the final submission of the draft plan. We have received no response to over 59,000 comments during the preparation of this plan. Sorry, we have received and responded to over 59,000 comments during the preparation of this plan. 56,000 of these were from residents. Italy End Site, Lord Mayor. The Italy End is one of those sites at the council ownership that we were put forward to relieve the pressure on the green belt. This site was previously This site was previously built on, so in planning terms, it's brownfield site. It was conferred by cabinet in July 2013. It's one of over 30 council-owned brownfield sites that could be used to deliver market, affordable or specialist new homes. The site was included in the council's strategic land availability assessment of 2013. The SLO was of consultation, part of the consultation process in the core strategy. Our aim is to maximise use of council-owned brownfield sites to meet current and future housing needs in the city. The council is seeking a developer for the Etoile Lane site. The council set design guidance for the site in October 2013. We have received a number of proposals which we are currently assessing. The design guidance retains an element of open space. We propose a mix of property sizes and types, including 35% affordable homes, which is sustainable, sustainable, that are greater than the citywide requirement of 15. We are committed to ensure that any development is affordable to a wide spectrum of household incomes. Once we have undertaken a financial and technical evaluation of all submissions and we have viable schemes, we will again consult locally. Residents will have an opportunity to view and influence the proposals. There will also be full consultation on detailed designs and other aspects through the statutory planning process. Council could have opted to put the site up to the open market. By setting out design standards and inviting proposals from the developers and housing associations through procurement, we can control how the development can meet local and citywide needs. For example, the scheme proposals must retain and improve open space and pedestrian cycle linkages, access arrangements and housing mix. Initial consultation has been undertaken on the principle of development through the publication of the SLO. Over the next few months, we will embark on pre-application consultation with residents ahead of a formal planning application. There will be a statutory period of consultation for any planning application. Our proposal is to use council assets to sustain economic growth and meet the future housing needs of the city. We are following the process here that we have been using for other council-owned sites across a wide range of neighbourhoods in the city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. And thank you, Mr Armstrong, for your question. We'll now move on to item seven, the 2014-15 budget. I call on leader of council to move the report, seconded by councillor McCarty. Can I just ask people to keep an eye on the lights, please? Otherwise, we won't get through everything on the agenda tonight. Thank you, councillor Forbes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And before I begin with the substance of my comments this evening, I want to pay tribute to someone who's been integral to finance and resources in this council for 25, for 35 years. Paul Vernon Woods joined Newcastle City Council as a young trainee accountant on the 26th of August 1980. He's worked here ever since, doesn't look a day older. And as a greatly respected city treasurer, which he's become over the years, he's been absolutely instrumental in developing numerous council budgets for a range of different administrations. He's made a hugely significant contribution to the council, to the city and in recent years to the wider local government sector. This is the last time that Paul will exercise his legal duties on behalf of the council before moving on to new challenges. So as I open this debate, I think it's only right that we pay tribute to Paul, to wish him well and to say thank you for all that he's done for Newcastle so far. Lord Mayor, in 2010, when council cuts were a dark cloud on the horizon, Paul was voted Finance Director of the Year. With an eye on the future, he told Accountancy Age magazine, "A finance director needs to have a positive can-do attitude. You have to get on and deliver, and that's the mood you need to create in your organisation. No one wants to see a treasurer look like they are about to burst into tears. It's important to give people the confidence we can deal with things." Paul has always demonstrated the confidence, tenacity and expertise to steer us through these challenging times, what he calls "the perfect storm". But even an eternal optimist like Paul has been forced to concede that we have never had it so bad. This year has seen the toughest settlement for local government that he has ever experienced in his long career, a significant statement given that Paul started his career in the 1980s. And when we set out our three-year budget plans last year, we estimated that we would have to save £90 million by 2016. We made a strong case to government about the unfairness of the way that the cuts have been applied. We have highlighted the fact that those councils with the highest levels of deprivation, with the least ability to collect large council tax revenues, were seeing the biggest cuts. We have tried and tried and tried to engage constructively with the government, suggesting ways in which a fairer distribution of spending cuts could lead to a fairer distribution of the pain. And it's worth remembering that resource equalisation was a fundamental part of the foundations of the introduction of the council tax system back in the mid-1990s. It was a fundamental recognition that local areas were able to raise different amounts of council tax because they had different council tax bases. And resource equalisation has been, up until the last couple of years, a fundamental principle of the way that the local government finance system has worked. And governments down the years have recognised the greater needs of some areas compared to others in the way that they allocate funding to local councils. The current government, however, in the last couple of years, has chosen to abandon this principle, and that is simply not fair to the people of Newcastle and many other less well-off parts of the country. The needs we face are obvious to everyone who knows Newcastle. Our rate of looked-after children is four times that of Wokingham. Our spend on homelessness and support at housing are three times that in Wokingham. Yet projections show that while our spending power will be cut by 22%, Wokingham's will increase by 1.1%. In Eric Pickles' letter to this council on page 11 of your agenda, he talks about a new settlement based on incentivising growth. He says, however, "The main focus of the settlement has now changed. Instead of being based wholly on needs and resources, it is now focused on incentivising growth." Now, I think that's an admirable intention and one we could support if it was implemented with care and thought, but it fails to take into account the existing responsibilities that we have as a council. It fails to take into account that we cannot overnight solve longstanding social problems. It fails to take into account our long heritage and past for Newcastle, which has caused so many people in this city to live many of their later years with disabilities and therefore be more reliant on local services. So rather than incentivising growth, the government has tied our hands behind our back and kicked our feet from under us. And it's not just me saying this. This case has been proven beyond doubt and is widely recognised by independent organisations like the Local Government Association, the Core Cities Group, the Joseph Roundtree Foundation, the National Audit Office, the Audit Commission, Sigoma and many more. Where once Newcastle was a lone voice making the case, there are now many across the country singing to the same tune and making it clear to Mr Pickles and his colleagues, "You have gone too far. Your cuts are unfair to local government and unfair to those communities who need us most." And in Newcastle, we had the foresight to see this coming, and others have realised with hindsight that we were right. Let's be absolutely clear about why we're right to continue to raise this gross unfairness. If our grant settlement had been in line with the national average, we would have had an additional £38 million to spend on services over the lifetime of this parliament. The government has deliberately chosen to take an additional £38 million from this council because of its ideological approach to imposing cuts. Now, this is a case that I and others have been making for quite some time now, and when I make these arguments, I find broadly that there are two counterviews. On the one hand, some people say that "I'm not doing enough", that I should stand up to government cuts by refusing to implement them, by setting a legal budget to keep services going, effectively bankrupting the council to score political points. On the other hand, I'm accused of complaining too much, of over-exaggerating the difficulties that council face. Some tell me that I should just forget about making the case to government for a fairer settlement and just get on with making the cuts. Let me deal with both of these arguments in turn. As I said last year to council, talk of illegal budgets is the politics of the playground. I'm not prepared to countenance futile political gestures or handing over direct control of this council to Mr Pickles. I will not apologise for behaving responsibly and taking the tough decisions that we need to to balance the books. Doing anything different would make Newcastle a target for national disgrace and would deal a devastating blow to the image and confidence of this city. Nor, nor however, nor however, am I prepared to give up the fight for our missing £35 million, money which has, in the large part, been collected from the businesses in our city through business rates and redistributed to other more affluent parts of the country. Any business short-changed by the amount that we are would be rightly so fighting its corner in every way possible. I will not apologise either for standing up for the interests of this city, for seeking to protect the people of Newcastle from this government, which seems hell-bent on attacking those least able to stand up for themselves. Because, let's be in no doubt, many of our residents are facing the double impact of cuts to council services and welfare reforms which are hitting incomes hard and pushing more and more people towards and beyond the breadline. What kind of society have we become when many of our citizens are forced to turn to food banks and crisis loans just to get by? Unlike the government, we will not turn our back on people in their time of need. Alongside our partners in the voluntary sector, we will be there to hold out a helping hand, not just propping people up during hard times. More and more, we are working with people in crisis to help them to find their feet and get back into work. We know that becoming and remaining economically active is the best way to escape poverty. And, Lord Mayor, because so many people in our city continue to face their own financial challenges, there will be no increase in council tax this year. And we are also planning to increase the Newcastle living wage that we pay to more than 2,000 staff employed by this organisation from April to £7.55 an hour, giving a boost to those who need it and putting money into many parts of our local economy. Colleagues will know that making Newcastle a working city is our number-one priority. Getting more and better jobs into the city is the best way of improving people's quality of life. Making sure people are paid a decent wage is the best way of ensuring families are able to plan for the future with confidence. And ensuring people are able to work throughout their lifetimes is the best way of future-proofing our public services from dealing with the corrosive, debilitating consequences of long-term unemployment. So we have done more than many councils to support the recovery of the private sector after the recession. We negotiated a city deal which could ultimately be worth £1 billion and create 13,000 jobs. We invested in infrastructure on the North Bank of the Tyne to attract further investment. We're redeveloping Eldon Square, the centrepiece of the city's retail offer. We unlocked the redevelopment of the Stevenson Quarter. We've worked with the university to make things happen on Science Central, now one of the biggest city-centre investment opportunities in Europe. We negotiated a package of broadband infrastructure improvements which will make Newcastle one of the best-connected cities in the UK. We're revamping the area around Central Station to create an iconic gateway to match our status as one of the UK's greatest cities. We're investing in our roads and cycle infrastructure to make Newcastle worthy of being a competitive, modern European city. And we're investing in a region-wide skills and youth employment programme to help young people into work and business to access the talent they need. We've invested in our cultural heritage, helping the Theatre Royal and the Tyneside Cinema improve their facilities, supporting a major expansion at Live Theatre and creating a sustainable culture fund to put arts funding in our city on a sustainable footing. We've stimulated the housing market, working with developers to get work going on much-needed homes starting in Scottswood and elsewhere across the city, often investing council capital, kick-start development and bring forward investment sites that the market might not be able to take forward otherwise. And we're investing £9 million in improvements to schools, helping ensure that our children enjoy an excellent learning environment and have the best possible opportunities to make the most of their future. These are all significant achievements, significant achievements making a huge difference to Newcastle, to the confidence in the city and to the outlook for prosperity for the city. I'm proud of these achievements. I'm proud of the fact that in tough times, we've stood shoulder to shoulder with the business community and will continue to do so. And I'm, this is a list of achievements that we should all be cheerleading and shouting from the rooftops about why this is a fantastic city. But we should not fool ourselves that our private sector recovery signals better times for public sector organisations or for the many hard-pressed people in our city. Sadly, public spending cuts are going to be with us for the foreseeable future, and councils along with other agencies will be dealing with austerity for some time to come. I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the very real prospect of an increasingly divided city, a city where recovery is only shared by a few, where those left out are ignored, where economic growth is key to the success of healing these wounds, but it needs to be inclusive growth that reaches out to those most in need. And this is therefore why, why council cuts do matter to businesses in the city. The council services at risk are integral to vibrant, functioning, healthy cities, things that make a difference to the pace of economic recovery, things like ensuring our city is clean, green and attractive to visitors, ensuring our roads are in a good state of repair and traffic flows freely, making sure the planning decisions to ensure our city develops in the right way are taken, supporting public transport infrastructure that links employment sites and employees, regulating shops, businesses and licensed premises so their customers can be assured that they are safe and sound, and ensuring that the frail and vulnerable are safe, enjoy a good quality of life and can make their own contribution to our community. The response to last year's public consultation on the council's budget plans demonstrated the power of involving the community. The scale of the response demonstrated the public passion in Newcastle for public services. It was a real eye-opener for those who might think that council services are taken for granted. But the real value came from the quality of the responses. Not only did people challenge and object to the proposed cuts, they engaged positively and constructively in finding ways to mitigate them. As a result, six of the seven libraries at risk last year have been, have been saved through community involvement. Community groups have come forward to take ownership of community assets, including leisure facilities. Parents of service users at Castle Dean and Chivvy View Rest Bite Centres have played an active part in working to safeguard their future. So, Lord Mayor, if there is a silver lining in this very dark cloud, it is that we have found that our communities are strong and resourceful. Many of the worst impacts of the budget cuts have been prevented by active and energetic community groups stepping in to save much-valued assets and services which the council can no longer sustain. With the government cutting our budgets year by year, it will be easy to feel powerless that Newcastle is a place that has things done to it rather than a place that does things. Instead, this cooperation and collaboration gives me hope that Newcastle can take control of its own destiny and plan for a better future. Because so many of the proposals being considered this evening were already in the public domain last year, the response to this year's budget consultation has been much more muted, but we have listened to many helpful contributions and made some important changes to our budget plans as a result. We will postpone the removal of a subsidy towards a handy person service for the next 12 months and continue to explore alternative delivery models in the hope that we can make the service more self-sustaining. We will continue with a plan to delete one independent reviewing officer post but not merge the separate safeguarding units for adults and children, and instead look to make savings through alternative efficiencies. We will retain a cashiering service at Kenton Customer Service Centre for one day a week on a Friday, which is the busiest day there, rather than fully withdrawing the service. A customer information zone will be available on other days. And we'll bring together reviews of family services in early years to a single whole-system review for children from conception to 25 years. And let me give notice, one of the new battle lines we will draw with government is about the future of Sure Start, one of the truly great progressive measures of the last few decades to break the cycle of poverty that holds children back. Now, public health has come home to the city council, and this year our budget includes spending on the public health of our city. This allocates £20.7 million to tackling a range of public health issues, including drugs and alcohol, addictions, sexual health services, obesity, tobacco control, water fluoridation and oral health. Over time, we want to lead an important and challenging cultural shift, away from spending on health being focused on reacting to the clinical symptoms of poor health, towards investment in preventative services which address the underlying causes of poor health. And within the constraints of the National Public Health Outcomes framework, we'll seek to do that. And our challenge is to build public health into everything that we do. That's why we've created a £750,000 wellbeing fund, which includes £400,000 to enable every ward in the city to support community-led projects to community-led projects to improve local public health outcomes. In keeping with our cooperative council approach, we should trust and empower communities to understand and act on their own needs in this and many other areas. In addition, the council will continue to invest next year six point six million pounds directly into the voluntary community sector up to two thousand and sixteen, as well as helping the sector develop the skills necessary to compete in mainstream procurement exercises. So our attention today is focused on agreeing a budget for the next financial year, which is the midpoint of our three-year programme. Our proposals include budget reductions of thirty-five point nine million pounds and spending of two hundred and sixty-three million pounds. We will soon be looking ahead to further years of budget reductions, which will no doubt drive us towards even more challenging decisions. But over the course of the next year, we'll be working even more closely with our partners. In particular, we will be exploring the support that we provide to children in their early years, helping them and their families to get the best possible start in life. All the evidence suggests that the steps we take at this vital stage for child's development has the greatest impact on that child's life chances and future opportunities. So the investments that we make in this area give us the best possible chance of breaking the cycle of inequality, helping everyone, regardless of the circumstances of their birth or upbringing, to get a fair start in life with equality of opportunity. Without it, we risk then living in a society where opportunity and advancement are defined at birth by privilege and social class. There was a time when government too recognised the benefits of this approach and protected services like Sure Start through ring-fence budgets. Sadly, no longer. We will do our best to mitigate the worst impacts, but there is no doubt that government cuts are putting these essential services at risk. I have no doubt that this will become an important issue in future budget debates. We will fight on in the interests of fairness. So, Lord Mayor, this budget sets out very, very challenging circumstances for the council, an inherent unfairness in the way that the government is allocating its Revenue Formula Grant to local authorities. It sets out the principles by which we seek to manage these reductions over time. It sets out very clearly a policy-led budget responding to the political agenda of the council, and I'm particularly proud that it seeks to protect the most vulnerable people in our city the most, who are, let's not forget, the people who often have the least opportunity to have their voice heard in debates. So this budget, Lord Mayor, at a time of reducing resources and increasing demand, seeks to strike the right balance between revenue cuts and capital investment, between services for people in crisis now and services which prevent people from reaching crisis point, between managing public sector job losses and creating employment opportunities in other sectors. In short, Lord Mayor, I believe it represents fair choices for tough times, and I therefore commend it to council.
Yeah, yeah. (Applause). councillor McCarthy.
Can I second and reserve the right to speak in the debate?
I now call on councillor Faulkner to respond and move amendments to the report, seconded by councillor Anita Law.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I believe that I have two common starting points with the leader of council, even if we might diverge on other matters later. The first is to echo his thanks and generous words about Paul Woods. Paul has been a brilliant treasurer for the city for many, many years. I think he has over thirty years of service. The words of that famous song, 'You don't know what you've got till it's gone', comes to mind here. I welcome Tom, his successor, into the chamber, but, boy, he's going to be a very hard act to follow. I think you should be pleased that he's left a very good team and a very good discipline behind him. But that wider contribution that Paul has made to the sector and to local government as a whole is almost as important as his contribution to us as a local authority. Mind you, I did feel on several occasions during the time that we were the administration that, like any good treasurer, even of a local scout troop or social club, that he kept something up his sleeve, and many of us couldn't quite have a look up his sleeve to check it out. But miraculously, at the end of the year, there was always an underspend, there was always something salted away. Well, these times are getting more difficult to find things salted away, there aren't things salted away, and that's my second starting point. But just to say again, Paul, thank you very much, and all the very best from us as well for the future.[913.04][913.04](Applause). So this is the second common starting point, I think, which is the funding context that we face for this particular budget. And I'm just going to read a few words that I've used in briefing and trying to influence some of our own parliamentary colleagues, sadly with rather no more success than the leader of council has in general, but we continue to do this. And that is to point out the realisation, the context, that government-public sector funding cuts, in order to protect funding, of course, on education, health, and pensions, have been bearing disproportionately on local government and within local government cuts disproportionately on areas of deprivation and disadvantage. Now, we know from previous debates that many London boroughs and many large authorities like Manchester and Liverpool and Birmingham are having to bear larger cuts per capita and per dwelling in both cash and percentage terms than Newcastle. Nonetheless, because we receive more in the first place, based on need and our lower council tax base, both of which are less recognised now in the national funding formula, and I share the concern that the leader has expressed on that, Newcastle in the North East is facing significantly above-average cuts. And I cannot understand either why wealthier areas in the South and South East are faring much better, in fact, this year in some cases positively. It is true that we receive as a city significantly greater spending power as now the method of evaluation in total from all sources, as the government calls it. But if the current trajectory of cuts is continued, then we know, because of figures that Paul has provided and others have endorsed, that spending power will be close to being equalised in four or five years' time. And there will be no recognition whatsoever of local needs or circumstances. And I want to put on record that I believe that is a wholly unacceptable trend that has to be stopped and has to be reversed. And we will add our voice to the voice of the administration on that. I want to start by commenting really on page twenty-seven, the summary of the budget that we're debating tonight. But I suppose in doing so, it's this figure of a hundred and eight million pounds over three years which is in my head and which I just want to say something about. Because, again, in the introduction to the budget report, I presume deliberately there is this confusion between budget cuts, i.e. cuts that the council's having to make in its budget, and government-funding reductions. And it's not good enough really to say, well, they're one and the same thing, because our additional cost pressures are not being funded by the government at all. Councils have always had to find efficiencies to cover increased cost pressures. We haven't always been able to run to government and expect cover for that. And I'm concerned really that we still have this fuzziness around how we describe the financial circumstances the city is facing. It's bad enough without really putting what I consider to be unreasonable spin towards it. And I'm going to give you an example of that, really. Well, I'll give you an example from two minutes ago, five minutes ago. The leader of the council said, we are, quote, I wrote it down, 'we're facing a budget reduction of thirty-five point nine million pounds'. We are not. Show me where in this report there's a budget reduction of thirty-five point nine million pounds. We are facing a savings target of thirty-five point nine million pounds. We have actually got a budget reduction of thirteen point five million pounds. That's nearly a third of the figure that you mentioned there. And the revenue budget actually reduces not by a hundred and eight million over three years but by forty-three million pounds over three years. And that's about, that's a measure, and I regret it too, of the service reductions we are making. We are cutting services. But at the same time, the difference between the hundred and eight and the forty-three is the efficiencies that the council is able to achieve, or stopping doing things that you judge that we do not need to do, and all good councils do that. So I think there's a misrepresentation of these figures which is still continuing, and regretful that I am too that we're in this position of having to cut any services. I do think that we should be honest and face up to what the figures really are. I'll give you an example too, based on this other narrative which says, 'Last year it was this, and this year it's so much worse'. Well, actually, it's exactly the same for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, the revenue budget prediction, as you had in your budget report a year ago. Because a year ago you said the budget estimate for fifteen, sixteen will be two hundred and forty-five million pounds, and what is it in this report for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen? Forty-five million pounds. So let's be honest and admit that there are levers we still have to pull as a council. There are efficiencies we can still find, there are new ways of working, and it doesn't do anybody any good to misrepresent figures in the way that's constantly done here. Even the capital programme, this report says, is the biggest programme of investment in the city for decades. Well, I'm pleased that there's a programme of investment, and most of the things that you mentioned on that list, they're great, and most of them were started under us, as a matter of fact, and more power to your elbow in carrying them through. But it's not the biggest programme of investment for decades. It isn't even the biggest programme of investment over the last five years. It's about half the size of the later years of the last decade, where we were running a capital investment of something like two hundred and fifty-three million pounds a year. And this year, actually, the year that's just coming to a close, we've actually cut back. We're only going to spend about forty percent of what you told us last year in your capital budget that we were going to spend. So let's get a bit of energy and effort into this. I don't know, it can't be that every scheme has to be re-profiled, every scheme's been delayed, you know, just what is going on here? Perhaps you might explain that to us in your response. I also want to say something about the gross budget, because the council doesn't spend two hundred and sixty-three point eight million, which is our figure for the revenue budget for next year. The council spends about eight hundred million pounds in total, some of that is put in housing revenues, some is passed through the schools, of course. But you have to look at the totality of what the council spends. And one of the things that scrutiny pointed out, and we as opposition pointed out, was the sort of disappearance over recent years of any sense of what the council actually spends, is we're now in the second year of looking at what purports to be a budget but is really just a list of cuts. And of course, we want to have a debate about where the cuts fall and try and ameliorate some of them. But it is only because of the pressure through scrutiny and opposition in the last six to ten weeks that we now have two extra pages put into this budget report, which you didn't have in the document that you consulted on, which actually explain in highly high level and highly summarised form what the council actually spends in totality, under directorates and under your priorities. Now, why couldn't we have had that before? And when you had that little forori with the Chamber of Commerce in the paper the other day, and I think it was based on some degree of misrepresentation, but nonetheless, I can understand where they were coming from, because we spoke to them as well. It was in part because these numbers were presented in strange ways and ways that couldn't be properly explained or understood. And it was part because they look at the budget in a completely different way to the way we seem to have been looking at budgets over the last two years. So I'm pleased to see that information presented, so we have at least some idea of the totality. I do notice, mind you, that the pie charts that we used to have at the beginning of the report are still there, but suddenly the actual pound note numbers have come off and we've translated them into percentages. You know, I think people would like to understand and have a little bit of narrative that says, 'That's the gross, that's how it flows through to the revenue budget that we spend, and here's what we're spending it on and how we're spending it', because that's important. Because at the end of the day, your job is not just to, as an administration, to deal with difficult cuts and cut what you have to cut and invest where you can invest. Your responsibility is for the stewardship of the whole amount that you are spending, that the council is spending. And therefore, I think your narrative has got to be about your stewardship of that eight hundred million and not just cuts, a narrative about cuts, and then some explanation about what we end up with in the revenue budget itself or the budget that's left over. And I'm still really not at all happy about the way in which you continue to, in places, express cost pressures which fall right across the whole pathway of council spending as a percentage of the net revenue budget. So you give a bigger percentage cut. It's explained partly apologetically this year, because we raised the issue last year, but there's a figure which seeps into the budget that talks about a sixteen percent reduction of the revenue budget from one year to another. Well, only if you count costs that fall across the whole of the council's budget and then express it as a percentage of the net. Of course, yes, you're going to get a high percentage. Why put it in? What point are you trying to make? It's an irrelevancy. And we were told it was for illustrative purposes. It's actually quite misleading. Now, I want to say something about, you obviously were, because I felt in a way you were a little stunned, councillor Forbes, by the criticisms of the Chamber of Commerce. And I think a lot of what you said, which I agree with, towards the middle of your speech about this great city and the investment and the need to support business, we share that agenda, of course, but I have a sense that you were addressing the Chamber of Commerce there rather than the city council particularly. But I do want to say that you were also stunned, it seems, by scrutiny, because I was very disappointed with the section of the budget report which responded to scrutiny. We used to have six scrutiny committees in this council and an overview committee, all of them dealt in some detail with the budget, because they were able to examine and speak to officers at various levels with budget responsibilities that we understood. Now we have one scrutiny committee, for good or ill, that has to deal with all of this. And that scrutiny committee was not being, you know, don't put up officers as the smokescreen for this, the questions that the scrutiny committee had, and there were members of both parties on that scrutiny committee, were challenging questions about the way in which information had been presented. It was not an attack on officers, it was about the way in which you must have signed off the information that was presented for consultation as a cabinet. And we felt that there were inconsistencies in the way in which information was being presented on the cuts, there were contradictions in some cases, there were delays in information. And in fact, a number of things that scrutiny suggested were accepted and have been amended. So why you should choose to be quite so challenging and quite so confrontational about scrutiny in that section of the budget report that addresses the scrutiny concerned is really of concern to me. I don't fully understand it at all. You can't mistake the quantity of information for the quality of information. Of course, you provide a lot of information, but it's the clarity and quality of the information and the appropriateness of the information to help people understand the budget that you're presenting that counts, not how many pages in totality and how many different sets of figures and how many iterations that we have. And, boy, we have a lot of those. So we're making a plea for more appropriate and consistent presentation of information for future budgets. And you know, because you noted it, that scrutiny will continue to take an interest in the budget. And hopefully in a helpful way. But I really do take exception to the comment that was made at the end of the section, the budget section, which says, 'It's the responsibility for scrutiny to help the cabinet ameliorate the worst impact of the cuts'. It is not. Show me in the two thousand local government act where it says that's a responsibility for scrutiny. Scrutiny has to ask questions, challenge, hold the cabinet to account, it has to monitor the performance of the council, and it is to contribute to policy development. That is what scrutiny is trying to do in this authority. If in doing those three things, along the way it helps cabinet to achieve its objectives, well, so be it, that's fine. But please do not rewrite the remit for scrutiny, because that is not up to you to do so. I want to just quickly comment on some of the other things I mentioned, page twenty-seven. The leader mentioned some of them here, and I applaud some of the changes and responses to the cuts from last year, which are recorded on page twenty-seven. Indeed, I do. The library service preserved because communities and partners have come forward with new solutions. I don't think it makes it right to have done what you did last year. We presented you with an alternative way that would have prevented closure of any libraries you chose not to have it. And it seems to me, and one of our amendments later on will address this, that you still have the opportunity to support a little bit better than you're doing those volunteer-run libraries which are now up and running. And I congratulate those people who have come forward to take part and provide services locally. But I think you can still find the wherewithal somewhere, somehow, to support them better. In the same way that Gaetzet, who are closing a smaller proportion of their libraries or exiting from them and turning them into community libraries, are still giving a degree of staffing support and a degree of book fund support. I'd like you to do it their way rather than that clinical close-the-door on them that you chose to adopt. You mentioned the Culture Fund, our innovative Culture Fund. I don't know what, you know, what's the innovation about the Culture Fund? There's no innovation, because nothing's been spent yet. And one thing I don't like about it is the way that you've chosen to take money out of this additional public health fund and use it to prop up this Culture Fund, when last year we actually suggested that the very same source of money should be used to help keep open libraries, sports centres, things that contributed much more directly to supporting public health, and you ruled that out completely. And now you're dipping into this to support the Culture Fund. I find that hypocritical and strange. I'm grateful and pleased that you're providing capital loans to cultural facilities. We always... we always used to provide capital grants to cultural facilities, but we're in straitened times. I'm pleased that you've changed tack on decent neighbourhoods and the neighbourhood support services this year. We actually suggested last year a way in which you could find some money to, not to have to make the second year of frontline costs, the cuts of, of staff, direct staff, and now you've done it, you've, you've chosen to redesign the service and you've chosen to direct the cuts towards management, that's exactly what we said last year, so we support you on that, pity you hadn't supported us last year. And, and then you talk in the context of Sure Start and everything else to the wider review that you're now going to have on families of younger children, the family services review, and I think that's a very good idea, and I just make a plea that this time round, perhaps you might like to involve scrutiny in that process too, because there's some wisdom and expertise that other members of the council have and would like to bring to bear, instead of it again being something which I rather suspect will be one of these secret cabinet committees dealing with it, and it pops out at the end for a rather token consultation, just like the public health one was last year after the budget. I want to mention, I want to mention procurement, where last year, we suggested that your targets were unambitious, we were told by Paul Woods, and he was probably right, that for us, just to pluck a figure out of the air for further savings from procurement was probably not wise, not sensible, but we'd still like to draw your attention to the fact that we think that greater savings are achievable through procurement, given that the total commissioning and procurement budget is well over four hundred million pounds. Colleagues will talk later about energy savings and utilities. I want to say what I said last year, because I believe even more so now, that we are concerned about the comparative, comparatively slow progress in achieving savings from shared services with, with other councils and with other public bodies, and we note that councils around the country are claiming much more progress, much faster progress than we seem to be managing. So, we'd expect to see discussions between councils about merging, merging the management, the back office and other support services for more mainstream activities, not just the peripheral ones. And if we finally get around to creating a combined authority, which we, which we support, we hope that that can be used to give some impetus towards greater shared services. For example, on community safety, even though we're now losing some of that budget to the commissioner, certainly on economic development and tourism, where it seems to me to make little sense to compete and duplicate on this scale if we have a combined authority. And we'd like to see the North Eastern LEP working with councils to support our business and try and rationalise some of our business-facing business support services. And I'm going to say what's, you know, clearly something that, that is always in the back of people's minds, I do think that if this pressure on public funding is going to continue for another three, four, five years, then we should start thinking the hitherto unthinkable and test the appetite and cost benefit of the merger of adjacent councils. In the meantime, I don't think, I can't see any reason why we shouldn't consider merger of housing companies run by local councils, we used to run the joint pathway, bridging Newcastle Gatehead, with, with Gatehead. I can't see any reason why we can't maintain separate housing revenue accounts but actually run a single housing management company if there's the will to do it. I think the same thing is true about managing culture and leisure facilities for the future. So, turning quickly to public health, I have to say, I'm concerned about how difficult it has been for us to get information about what the public health money that came across from the PCT in excess of twenty million pounds was actually spent on. Not the themes, there was a consultation, a rather desultory one and a late consultation last summer, but I actually mean what, what the project, what project was selected, what criteria and what outcomes we've had. And it's taken a very long time to get that information, we'll comment on it later, councillor Taylor will refer to it, but, but I, I truly believe that there's still some scope to work much more creatively with, with that money in, in a wide range of ways. Turn now to our amendments, you've got, you've got them written, we will move them formally at the end of the evening. The first is to delete these, some of these you will recognise from last year, so at least we get some credit for consistency. We delete the deputy cabinet member positions and therefore their allowances too. We don't think, we don't think that doubling the number of deputy cabinet members and almost tripling their allowance from the days that we had a few of them is wise in present circumstances. We'd like them to fall on their swords, please, nothing personal, you understand, I look at the deputy cabinet members present. And I would like to see that saving used to fund a, a, a library assistant and book fund to support the community libraries. The second is to reduce the number of support staff. We ran the city council with three support staff in our office, I don't see why you need to have seven, I understand it might go down to six, we'd like to see you reduce it to the same number that we had and to use that to support the maintenance of play areas where funding has dried up. We're proposing a smaller reduction in trade unions' staff and accommodation support costs and an increase in car, car park permits for members and to staff and to use that to increase the number of apprentices. We're, we're looking to reduce the number of direct reports to the chief executive, and we, we would like you to consider and look at the position of assistant chief executive, which we used to have and then we got rid of and then came back again. And again, this has nothing to do with individuals, this has to do with the, the actions and responsibilities and how efficiently and appropriately they might be placed at a managerial level. Some of those responsibilities can report directly to the chief exec, others can be distributed amongst four others. We're beginning to look as though we have rather more top-level managers than the, the local authorities around us. And then finally, and I alluded to it, further reduction in energy and other utility costs by two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to support additional staff on the streets and in parks. So, in conclusion, thank you, Lord Mayor. I believe that there are still savings, large and small, to be made, we try to illustrate some of them, we think there are more, and the amendments that will be tabled and voted upon later, I hope you might be able to give them support. If you don't tonight, I hope you do what you did last year, take them away and then bring them back to us as part of your budget for next year.
Councillor Anita Lower, can I just remind you that you've got five minutes and then the trap door opens?
Do I get sent home then? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I do want to say just before I start, I'd like to just add my thanks to Paul. I've had twenty years of budgeting in this council and most of it's been done with Paul's encouragement or help and support, and I think it would be a great miss to this council. Can I just start by saying, I think we all acknowledge that this is a very difficult times and we, as a group, have lobbied, as David has said, and campaigned for a change to the current funding regime, not with much success, I will also add, but we will continue to do so, and I'd also be very glad to join in any campaign to save Sure Start, I think it is vital for young children and it makes such a difference to them, that we would, we would do anything to preserve it, it's one of the great successes that we have had. Coming back to the, this year's budget, as, as we've said, the council does have two hundred and sixty three point eight million in the revenue support grant for the coming financial year, and I think what I am grateful for is the papers that we have now, which give us a more complete picture of the spending power of the council, and alongside the proposed cuts, and it's actually allowed for a proper debate, which is, is, is good, because that's what we need to do, we need to get this right, it's so important. But there are a number of issues that I personally want to highlight. The first one is, if you look at our enabling authorities, and they're all under the same financial pressures as us, and I just wondered how much, much more we could do to actually look at work more collaboratively. I think there's got to be an alternative to cuts and there are things to be learned from each other, I'm not saying that we give up services, but that maybe there are efficiencies or lessons to be learned, and I think that that's going to become more important as the cuts go deeper, because at the minute, it doesn't look like any end to them. I also want to mention the consultation response from the Chamber of Commerce and their comments on the confusing presentation of the figures, and as I've already said, I welcome the clearer detail now, but I think that we really need to look at how we adopt this next year, and I would urge cabinet to look at, look at this approach from day one, rather than, you know, waiting until the last moment to get all these figures together for us. It is a three-year budget and it would be, it would be important to just carry this forward. I think it's important that the city comes through any recession stronger. I agree with the leader of council, we need to be preparing for the future, we don't want to be looking for a blame culture, we don't need to be, we need to be part of a strong region, and to do that, we need to make better use of our resources to promote the city, and I think it was councillor Bell who said at one of our meetings, we are open for business. And we've also got to remember though, but we're here to protect the residents, and anything that we can do to, to support that, we would do. I think there is an opportunity to make better use of scrutiny, we have the capital projects task and finish group at the moment, which is looking at the major projects, for example, on the civic centre refurbishment, central gateway, Stevenson Quarter, and, and looking at the reprofiling of these, and that will be brought back in the next few months to cabinet, and I hope cabinet will look on that favourably as something that's a contribution to the, the fabric of this council and not, not critical. I think we're also, one of the things that scrutiny is going to do, and I think will be important, is to keep the budget monitoring group, which we're hoping to arrange to meet quarterly to monitor all aspects of the budget, and one of the things I would say in this chamber is I would urge all backbench members that, to, to come along and join in, everybody has a place at scrutiny committees, and it's really important that people who have a view come along and give us their views, it's not just down to the scrutiny members, so I would encourage anyone who wants to be part of that to come along and have their say. And I think finally, just to say that I do endorse all of what councillor Faulkner has said, it's good to see that some of our budget suggestions from last year have come back, and I would urge you to look at this year's amendments and a positive example of what could be done. I'm sure there are many more, but what we really want is things which will benefit the citizens of this city and see us take it forward. It's tough times, yes, we agree, but there are good things that we can do. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I would remind members that understanding order seventeen, all the amendments will be the subject of a single debate, then each amendment will be voted on in turn. A number of members have already indicated that they wish to speak. Firstly, I propose to take these speakers one at a time, and then I will ask other members to indicate if they want to speak. And finally, I would call on members who reserve the right to speak to have their say then. Can I remind everybody that you have up to five minutes to put your point forward? If you're still on your feet of five minutes, I'll cut you off. Right. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Now, whatever your view of the coalition government, it does actually represent sixty per cent of the people who voted at the last general election. And it is a fact that the Labour Party under Gordon Brown and his henchman Ed Balls ran up debts whilst in government, which the rest of us now have to repay. Health and schools and pensions have been protected by the government and their spending has grown, but the money for these essentials has had to come from somewhere and local government has inevitably felt the impact of this. Now, the coalition government is using a carrot and stick on local government spending. As a reward for not raising council tax, the government is actually giving us over a million pound extra in grants in order to have this freeze this year, and that's on top of things like the Liberal Democrats' pupil premium, which is worth fifteen million pounds to Newcastle. It also boosts local business taxes handed by the Treasury to Newcastle City Council and gives large amounts of money directly to this council by way of earmarked grants. Over the next few years, there will have to be some reductions to help pay Labour's debts, but the Liberal Democrats on this council will continue to argue, as we have been doing for some time, for the cuts to be fair to cities such as Newcastle. But we all need to recognise that we're in an age where efficiency is vital. It is difficult at times, and I recognise it can be very hard, but unfortunately, it is necessary. We Liberal Democrats still think that some of Labour's priorities are wrong. A Labour council is more expensive to run than a Liberal Democrat council. Labour's deputy cabinet members and Labour's reintroduced assistant chief executive are unnecessary and costly, and that money can be better spent. We are also proposing other examples of where money could be saved and spent more wisely. Central government reduced energy costs by ten per cent in a year, so why should the ruling group balk at our proposal, which is much less? It can be done, and if you do it by empowering people who have a clear remit to do it, rather than trying to run things centrally, it can be achieved. Now, Labour thinks that the state must provide everything, and I have to admit, I'm basing this on what I heard councillor Tog say a few months ago, when he came to the Quaker Meeting House, but that isn't always the only or the best way. For example, as a nation, we give naught point seven per cent of our national wealth each year to overseas aid, but that doesn't stop huge numbers of people giving tens of millions of pounds out of their own pockets to help out too, showing that people in this country are basically caring and generous. Now, thankfully, we've got many voluntary groups providing effective and valuable services to their community in this city, and I do think that we need more, not less. And to achieve this, we need to devolve authority down to the level at which it is best exercised, which seems to go against the way that things are heading under this Labour council, which seems to prefer centralisation. We are in difficult times, and I believe to get out of it, we all need to work together, council, councillors and volunteers, and that's all volunteers, not just those who are members of the Labour Party. We all need to work together so that we can sort out the mess left, left by the last Labour government. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I take your threats of cutting me off after five minutes very seriously, so I'll keep this brief. I'd also like to thank councillor Anita Lower and councillor David Faulkner for their contributions this evening, both of which I think have been very measured, very, very constructive towards the, the debate over the budget, so thank you for that. I've got three very quick points to make. The first is that I'm very proud to be part of an administration that's, again, freezing council tax in Newcastle. When I talk to residents in my ward, many of whom are owner-occupiers or private renters, they all talk about the cost of living, they all talk about the price of fuel, the price of clothes, the price of food, all of these cost pressures that they're facing as individuals. And I think it's great that this, this council is reaffirming its commitment to doing what it can to help them by freezing their council tax bills again this year. The second point I'd like to make is relates to the capital programme, which councillor Faulkner brought up. I, I have to say, I was slightly confused, because in the vast majority of meetings that I've attended in this council, we've heard an awful lot about how the previous Labour government spent too much while it was in office. Yet on the capital programme for this financial year, we seem to hear that the Labour council is spending too little. But nevertheless, putting that to one side, this is a three-year capital programme, and I think what, what's really important is that we, we make sure that the money is invested wisely over the course of those three years. I'd far prefer that we invest wisely in twenty fourteen, fifteen and twenty fifteen, sixteen, rather than invest unwisely to rush money out of the door in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, which seems to be the approach that might be suggested from across the floor. And finally, I'd just like to talk about cost pressures, this is the third of my three points. Last year, there was a part of the critique of the council's budget was that cost pressures were being unnecessarily inflated, that this was all part of a political manoeuvring on behalf of the administration to, to try and make things look less favourable than they actually were. I think what we've seen through the outturns in, in this financial year is that the, the cost, the cost pressures that were forecast have proved to be very real across, across a range of services, adult and social care, across utilities, across all these different costs that the council is responsible for meeting. I just want to make the point that the cost pressures that were put in last year's three year budget haven't been inflated, they were, it was wrong to doubt their integrity, and, and that I hope that what we've shown this year is that the, the forecast that we've provided and the outlook for Newcastle has been accurate. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Cot.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Yes, we find ourselves in a very difficult position in this council with another round of, of cuts, and I don't think anyone in this chamber would wish to say anything which undermines the severity of some of those things. However, it doesn't help when the council presents a budget in a way which makes the situation seem far worse than it is and is less than honest about the way it presents cost pressures as opposed to government cuts. It's fundamentally dishonest, it suits the administration, no doubt politically, to present these things in this way, but it does no one good service, it certainly doesn't do the service to the residents of this city that this, that these, that our residents deserve. deserve, and I would wish that they wouldn't present their budget in this way. Councillor Faulkner has very ably talked about some of the consequences of the presentation in this fashion, so I'm not intending to talk about those things specifically, but I do want to put down a marker that I think it's fundamentally dishonest to present a budget in that way. The problems we have with understanding the budget are exacerbated also by the fact that what we presented with in the budget was really a series of budget cuts as opposed to a proper budget, which makes it very difficult to scrutinise. And councillor Lower very ably described some of those issues from a scrutiny point of, was it councillor Faulkner, probably both, I can't quite remember, but anyway, it was mentioned. There were one or two issues that I wanted to raise in particular. I'm very pleased to see some of the proposals that have come forward. The proposals around early years, I think, are something that we wish to be involved with, we'd wish to support in many senses. I think I share with councillor Forbes this perspective of his, that early intervention and prevention needs to be at the heart of our work with children and families, and tackling inequalities is really important as part of that. There are, of course, resources which are coming in to the local authority from central government to help to support this agenda. It's not all about cuts. There is, of course, the troubled families project, there is the bid to, the best start bid, hopefully that will be successful, there's a lot of work that's going into that, I'm aware of that, and it's really quite important. And the council seems to be embracing working with partners, part of all of that, and that's something that certainly I and others have raised many times in this chamber. The council does seem to have a split personality. I noted councillor Forbes talked about cooperative and collaborative in terms of his dealings with partners. However, sometimes the council also displays a sort of Stalinistic control, wanting to deliver everything directly and criticising everyone when it can't be delivered by the council directly. There seems to be, I think it's a cultural issue, I think, for the administration. There are certain elements of it that are inclusive and want people to be part, want all organisations, partners to work together, and others want the council to deliver everything. I'm pleased that the thrust of the policy isn't that, but sometimes you see it in the narrative around cuts, particularly around cost pressures. The city council, the government should be dealing with all the city council's cost pressures. I don't think that's the case. And councillor Johnson made a point about cost pressures. He said that our concerns were about the level of the cost pressure. I think, my recollection, it was more about that the city council was trying to make out that government should deal with all the city council's cost pressures. But actually, working with partners may actually deal with some of these issues, and it's really important. Working with, I know there's some really good relationships that are being pulled together with the CCGs, with health providers, there's public health funding, there's work with schools, there's opportunities to use the fifteen million pounds of pupil premium funding, which I think will all add to this agenda, so I think that's all really positive. So I think there's quite a lot of work to do there. But my concern about the specific proposal around early years, I can see the light, and families, but also some of the other proposals around education psychology, around school improvement, there's very little detail beyond there, and I think that's a concern because it's very difficult to evaluate it. I know things are at an early stage, but I would have hoped that things would be at a more advanced stage at this point when we're trying to agree the budget for the year, particularly as part of a three-year programme, of course, and some of these things have actually been brought forward. And I'll leave it there. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Kept to time, as I have for the last few times that I've spoken.
Councillor Talbot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I start, can I add my personal thanks to Paul as well for all the hard work over the many years he has served this council and the city? If I shugle a bit, because I'm absolutely freezing, so excuse me if I wander around. I'd like to speak in favour of the revenue budget and the capital programme set out in Appendix One. We've already heard of the unfairness of the government settlement and the impact on Newcastle, confirmed by a range of organisations, including the NAO and the Audit Commission. Having to deal with cuts of around a hundred and eight million pounds over three years has been and continues to be an extremely difficult undertaking. The way in which we've approached this has been based on our values of fairness and social justice, on protecting the most vulnerable and trying to shape the long-term future of the city and our residents. When we proposed a three-year budget, we were honest and open about the scale of the cuts, but the, sorry, we were honest and open about the scale of the cuts. I can't use the iPad tonight, I'm afraid. But the opposition accused us of shroud-waving and of scaremongering, but we were not. We were trying to have an open discussion about what kind of city we want to live in and how we involve residents in shaping that. Maybe the Liberals accused us of scaremongering because they were so embarrassed about the huge cuts their government was proposing to implement and tried to deflect attention from that fact. Sadly, even our worst fears were more than realised, and we lost more funding than we had anticipated. We were not scaremongering. We were actually leading the way in how to set a three-year budget, and it's good to see that where we led, other councils are now following. The honesty of our approach gave time for alternative choices to be discussed and in some cases implemented. For example, library services have been preserved. But to be honest, the word doesn't really convey what is happening in my ward. In Fenham, the possibility of the library closing was awful. One resident I spoke to said it made her feel suicidal. It was her lifeline. I'd like to thank the ward councillors in Blakewell and Windrove, Wyattchaine, and our amazing library staff, who have come up with such creative ideas and developed partnerships with Shoe Flying and Project Scolar to keep our library open. It looks fantastic and the possibilities are brilliant. But we wouldn't have been able to do this without facing up to the real impact of cuts to our budget. We wouldn't have had the time to consider options to involve other partners. Ward budgets continue to support local priorities at the neighbourhood level, I don't think that's Stalinist. There are also examples of cross-word working, such as the successful work for benefits project jointly funded by Blakewell Warden Parish, Fordham, Fenham and Kenton Wards. This project has seen two hundred and thirty-eight clients and secured an additional four hundred and sixty-one thousand pounds in annualised benefits gained. This not only benefits the individuals and families involved, but also the local economy, which is absolutely key to helping people who live there. This demonstrates that working together can provide opportunities to make more effective use of the budgets that we have. In addition, as the leader mentioned, there will be a naught point four million health and wellbeing fund for twenty fourteen, fifteen and twenty fifteen, sixteen, to fund grassroots projects which address health and wellbeing issues. I think in the face of such government unfairness, that we are rising to this immense financial challenge. We have a balanced budget, an imaginative capital programme based on our four priorities, including something very close to my heart, improving cycle infrastructure, and an innovative cultural fund. We have devolved budgets at ward level to deliver local priorities, and we continue to provide vital services. We could not do this without our staff, who have faced and continue to face such difficult times. I was saddened, therefore, that one of the amendments put forward by the Liberals is to reduce trade union staff and accommodation support costs to save thirty thousand pounds. The role of trade union staff in working with and supporting our staff through this is vital to good staff management relations and says a huge amount about the value we place on our staff. Cutting this budget, cutting the budget for this would be wrong. I urge you to approve the budget.
Councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I assumed it was going to take longer to get to me. There was one thing that really cheered me up about this budget, and that is those three pages hidden away in Annex Three, I think it's about page one hundred, that were inserted after a huge amount of pressure, because for the first time, I think, since this administration came to power, we actually have a budget to discuss. It's a bit of a shame that there's no narrative to explain what it all means, so nobody, you know, without Paul Woods at their elbow to go through each figure can properly understand it. But I think it's a fundamental point of democratic transparency and accountability, that this council should be publishing a full budget book every year. I think there's no excuse for it. And for all the sort of counter-spinning we've been getting this year, we should be getting that every year and ask the administration to start going back to that again. In particular, we might have ended up without the basic error that we seem to get, that this year's budget is correcting, where the frontline environmental staff were going to get slashed, but not the management level above them. So we would have had a full complement of managers managing nobody if the amendment that's going through, sorry, the change to the three-year budget that's going through this year isn't doing. And that's, you can only spot those errors if we have a proper budget that everybody can scrutinise, everybody can check, rather than just simply a list of cuts. I've got another brief comment, something that's been bugging me recently about the whole idea of cooperative council, because I feel the administration and backbenchers are in a bit of a tizz about the role of community volunteers. And one minute it's all being encouraged, the next minute it's being discouraged in case it's replacing council jobs. And there's a real mixed message coming out here, whether it's from the administration in total, or, as I say, ward councillors, where they almost feel they have to caveat everything and say, we don't want volunteers to replace council jobs, except we do. And it's not helpful for partners, it's not helpful for the general public. But the main point I want to make is really about Amendment Five. Now, I must admit, I've been browbeat somewhat to water this down to a mere two hundred and fifty thousand pounds, because that's about two and a half per cent of the budget. I know from my experience, from studies that have been done of implementing energy savings at zero cost, that ten per cent is typical, and up to thirty per cent can be achieved. I proposed, I must admit, five per cent, which would have given us half a million quid, but the amendment went forward, watered down to two hundred and fifty thousand, just to show how simple, how easy this could be, and hopefully tempt the majority group into voting for this amendment and taking costs which are flowing out of the council into energy companies and put them back into the frontline where they can support the jobs and the services our communities depend on. If you want to know how to do it at zero cost, it's very, very simple. The minute the council pretty much operates on a model of the bills come in and the cheques go out to pay them, and the cost pressure figures pretty much reflect what was expected to happen in those costs. If we delegated those down to individual managers and gave them targets to reduce those budgets, then I guarantee you, because I've seen it in practice, the costs will come down and the savings can be shared elsewhere. There's an incentive for employees to take part in this, because, of course, if we reduce those costs, like utilities, these sort of overhead costs, then it gives job security. I can't see how anybody could support it. Two hundred and fifty thousand pounds is a very, very, very modest target. I hope that we will approve this amendment, either now or quietly afterwards, as tends to be the case. And then, in implementation, we may be able to send more. I have to say, the figures I've based those on before, to preempt councillor Todd, who may be about to speak and talk about street lighting, those figures do not include street lighting, they do not include schools, they are the energy and utility costs that are completely in control of the budget, sorry, in control of the council. So there is no excuse for not supporting this amendment, and I hope the council will do so. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to comment specifically on the capital budget tonight. Councillor Johnson's already mentioned the fact that the capital budget is quite complicated, and it is indeed quite complicated, very complicated, with over seventy major projects and a number of smaller projects. So for anybody in the council chamber to actually say that it's wrong to amend, to move, to shift, it is quite incorrect. I think it's rather prudent to actually do that, and I'd just like to give some examples of how the council has done that, and it's because of a, probably helped by a current governance system which has been brought in place since November two thousand and thirteen. Let's bear in mind that the capital programme is designed to stimulate activity and economic growth in the city, as well as directly supporting council planned ambitions. Some example is leaving in public and private sector investment to deliver development and jobs, for example, Stevenson Quarter. And just one thing I'd like to comment, Lord Mayor, the examples are now actually coming out with substance, because Stevenson Quarter, in particular, I have been told that there's young people coming down from Newcastle College who are actually taking up employment on the Stevenson Quarter, so literally walking down the bank and taking up employment, and I hope to be meeting some of them, young people, very soon. And I think that's examples, that's real examples of how, as councillor Lower stated, I have used the phrase that Newcastle's open for business. It's young people coming into employment that wasn't there before this administration took charge of the city. There's other examples, such as Science Central. The programme itself, complicated, it's funded from a variety of sources, including grants, capital receipts, as well as assets. But the main proportion of the funding comes from the council's borrowing, funded by income streams generated by projects or increased business rates from the ADZ. Fifty-two, fifty point two per cent from our own capital borrowing, thirty-five per cent from grants and other external funding, and fourteen point eight from capital receipts from the sale of other assets, revenue contributions and reserves. The sale of assets is going very well, Lord Mayor, and probably coming into some part of the agenda which is going to be later, which is my portfolio report, but the sale of assets is going well to support invest to save projects, and I think that's very important, that we've managed to put that in the budget as well. So it has been mentioned about the slip, but I want to emphasise the fact that councillor Johnson mentioned before, is the fact that we're being prudent. It's not slippage, it was an adjustment for the sake of it, and it's certainly not spend for the sake of it. There was criticism of the Labour government before about spending money that they didn't have. Well, we've been very prudent and we've been actually very successful in bringing other monies in, so that's actually created savings. But that doesn't mean that you've got to spend for the sake of spending. You spend for the right reasons, you spend for an investment in the city, you spend to create jobs, and you spend to make the city a better place to live. And I think we've, many examples of how we've done that and how we'll continue to do that. Any capital project needs to be flexible, to take into account the changes, circumstances and opportunities. We're always looking out for new bidding as well, bidding opportunities such as transport schemes, ARDF, LEP funding. In most of these, we need some match funding from our programme to bring in money from, for example, DFT, highway schemes. We will refinance of two hundred and fifty thousand children to be programmed in the sites that were identified as being affected by major work bids or by accident data such as being affected by the city's central capital works. We need to be able to have flexibility to change some of the capital projects, and that's what's came in. It's also important to optimise our borrowing and to deliver this investment, but that doesn't mean borrowing where we don't have to. We are continuously working to lever other sources of funding to deliver development, public or private sector funding. When we're going for public sector, especially for government funding, Lord Mayor, what we should bear in mind is normally the tight time schedules that were placed under, which makes it even more complicated. But again, by the expertise of the officers and the professionalism of the officers, we're managing to pull more of these projects off the shelf and actually deliver for the benefit of the city. Is there any good news to come? Yes, there's more good news. There'll be some other items in my report, but one that's very close to my heart, on the board of a number of wards, announcement of three million pound additional funding from the Department of Transport for junction improvements at Cowgate Roundabout. Again, exceptional, great news for the city, and I'm sure that the residents who have to commute and use that junction will be improved, will be impressed when them improvements are brought in place. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we've heard a lot tonight, as we regularly do in this chamber, about government cuts and their impact on this council. It is clear that the party opposite consider they're on strong political ground on these issues. We know they'd rather not talk about what cuts they would have made in this parliament, nor about cuts they would have to make in the future, given Ed Balls' commitment on spending limits. And they've been claiming credit tonight for initiatives like the cycling initiatives, the youth employment initiatives, those are from extra funds provided by Liberal Democrats in government, they can't have it both ways, but they try to. I remember when this administration took office, I remember the pronouncements of the leaders of council on their priorities. They said there will be political... leader of council on their priorities, they said they will be politically accountable. It sounds tonight as if Oat Pickles is, they think Oat Pickles is accountable, not them. They would work to make Newcastle a fairer city, which is certainly not a fairer city by any aesthetic definition. They would work to make Newcastle a cooperative council, while the jury is still very much still out on whether cooperation with residents, with volunteers, with business, and even with other town-on-wear authorities, is really very effective. They would work to make Newcastle a fit-for-purpose council, well up to a point, Lord Mayor. They've made it a council fit for purpose on pumping out corporate spin, but not, I would suggest, on the terms of focusing on the basics of council service delivery. When this side of the chamber controlled the council, we focused on our six to fix priorities. Sustainability, is the council fit for purpose on sustainability now? We see very little evidence of this, not least in falling recycling rates. Rooting out waste and inefficiency, we made a major effort on this agenda, generating major savings. We don't believe the same effort has been made by the party opposite, as councillor Faulkner has said, they would rather portray this as government cuts, not as cost pressures. Raising educational attainment, progress was made under our watch. We don't hear a great deal from the party opposites about how the administration is pleading with taking this progress process forward. Cleaner streets and neighbourhoods, investing in roads and pavements, well it is painfully obvious, Lord Mayor, the administration is failing on this front. The leader talks about letting traffic flow freely, presuming this explains therefore why his budget does not include any funding at all for maintenance of the city's traffic lights, that presumably is how he's going to make traffic flow freely, there'll be no more traffic light in this city. The evolving power to communities and bottom-up regeneration, there is far more centralisation than before, there is fairly little regeneration. Making our city safer, well crime is on the rise after years of falling, perhaps this is down to our Labour Police and Crime Commissioner. Add to this what councillor Bell talked about, flexibility of how it is delivering the council's capital budget, that's one way of looking at it. Another way of looking at it is saying this is in disarray in many regards, and the council's capital budget is at risk of losing significant chances of funding because of the delay and the inability to solve the sort of the delivery of the programmes like the central station, which is causing chaos in the city centre, transport measures like the Hadriks Mill to Blue House corridor, where this council has funding promised by government and failed to implement it because it wanted to get more instead for other projects across town and we're. This is a council that is losing its way into the party opposite. As the Chamber of Commerce identified, this is less a budget than a list of cuts, there is a marked lack of transparency. This is a council that would ultimately prefer to fix the figures and fix the headlines, that they would prefer to fix the streets and do the basics properly. The people of the city are going to realise this, we will continue to remind them that they elected Lib Dem council 10 years ago to fix Labour's management, they should do it again in the very near future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Just before I move on to the next speaker, could I just say that it's absolutely freezing in here? I've got three brass monkeys sitting under my desk here, right. I will move on, councillor Pierson, the very cold councillor Pierson.
I should ring councillor Pierson, Lord Mayor. I rightly support the budget, of course, but it's with a fairly heavy heart, because despite all the imagination and ingenuity that's been brought to bear on our situation, and some of the improvements that we've been able to make, nevertheless, this budget means that many more of our staff will be losing their jobs, many more of our residents will get a poorer service than they deserve. We have been dealt a very poor hand by the government, I won't labour the details because other people have already done so. But why is it that when we have so many children who need our care and support, so many frail old people who are without resources of their own, so many miles of roads that are in terribly poor condition, we get much less resource to deal with these things than much wealthier, much less deprived areas in the south, who are being given an increase, not a dramatic reduction? And there's no end in sight to this, Lord Mayor, either. I fear very much that this city will become a place where, despite every effort, every sinew being stretched by all of us, and although the Liberal Democrats are of course partly to blame for this because of their role in government, nevertheless, I suspect that people on the other side of the chamber here really wouldn't like to see this city a place of despair, mass unemployment and terrible poverty, as it was in the not very distant past again. So although I support the budget, of course, I am afraid for the future, and I do think that unless something dramatic changes in the very near future, things will become intolerable. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hoddart?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, you're right, it is freezing. I've just been able to get me coat. I just want to pick up on two things here. One is about the capital programme. Councillor Forbes talked about the importance of Newcastle being a working city, and he mentioned Science City, Eldon Square, the North Bank of the Tyne, Stevenson Quarter, Cycling Strategy, and how we should be cheering them on. They are all good projects, I've got no problem with this, as they were all started under us. Science City, I remember it, and it was left for six months by the Labour administration, and nothing happened, roffed it by the brewery, absolutely nothing happened, until we came in. And the Stevenson Quarter, I remember the letters you wrote, saying that the Liberal Democrats were investing the ratepayers' money in a five-star hotel and wasn't that a scandal? And it was an absolute nonsense. And it was such a nonsense, you've allowed the project to go through and are claiming credit for it. I have no problem, however, in letting you take credit for the developments around the central station, it was part of the Stevenson project, but we're very happy to let you take the credit, because it really is a dog's dinner, and it's dysfunctional, and you've foisted this on the residents, and you don't seem to have a plan to improve it. You also talk about being shoulder to shoulder with industry. Well, I think you're going to have a problem there, if you want to be entrepreneurial and show your business credentials, given the lack of planners, severs and staff with economic development expertise following your last slash-and-burn budget, it is questionable if this city council now has enough staff with the competency and skills to attract in and work with further possible developers. The other point I want to make is one that Anita Lewer made about children's centres, it was very short-sighted of you to announce a three-year programme for closing these, given the increasing demand for nursery places and giving the incoming entitlement of 15 hours of free nursery places, which was a Lib Dem proposal. And if you want to work closely with local communities and not-for-profit groups and charities, while you're looking at the need to reduce costs and expanding services, Shawestart has to be writ large here, there is great opportunity to work with local groups on this and save these buildings and save the services for children. If we don't have these services, what are we doing for the future residents of this city? You do have a reputation, going back for many years, of closing things like pools and libraries and youth clubs, and look what that generates in terms of antisocial behaviour and bored youths. It is much more challenging and satisfactory to actually create facilities for our citizens. Those are the only two points I wanted to make about the budget, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Stockdale?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I know that a lot of my colleagues want to speak this evening, so I'm going to try and not to take up too much time. Neither am I going to waste too much time, might surprise some, to learn of bashing the Liberal Democrats' opposite for their culpability in the shockingly unfair black hole that's been forced on Newcastle City Council by the coalition government. But I would just like to pick up a couple of points that councillor Faulkner made, if I may, in his opening remarks. Because I know that councillor Faulkner is a friend to the arts and cultural sector in Newcastle, indeed, since my appointment to the role of Deputy Cabinet Member for Public Health, Culture, Leisure and Libraries, councillor Faulkner's been very, very helpful and supportive of me in that role. So I'm quite surprised to hear that councillor Faulkner can see that there is a link between the health and wellbeing of our residents and a vibrant, vibrant cultural sector in the city, and that's what we've tried to recognise in our commitment through the Newcastle Culture Investment Fund. I'd also say that, on the point that he made about it being difficult to get information on our public health budget and where the budget is going, now I know you want to abolish me, David, but perhaps before you do, you might urge your colleague councillor Taylor to drop me an email or arrange a meeting with me, I'd be quite happy to spend time talking to her about the public health budget and our priorities for that and how it's being spent. Just to, just really to pick up on one of the points that the leader of the council made in his opening remarks, and think again really about the government, coalition government cuts to Newcastle City Council's budget, because actually if they were in line with the national average, then we would have had an extra £38 million over the lifetime of this parliament, of this coalition government, to spend on libraries and on youth provision, on arts and culture, on cleaning, cleaning the streets and brass cutting and emptying the bins, and all the things that are being reduced are being, closing or ceasing because of the huge cuts being imposed on us. And I think, I think that's the truth of the situation that we're in. We're not asking for more, we're just asking for fairness, we're just asking to be treated in a fair and equitable way, which I think everybody in this chamber agrees we're not. But we shouldn't pretend that this isn't political, because of course it is. All you need to do is have a look at a map of the UK, broken down by parliamentary constituencies, and you'll see how many of the seats in the Tory shires are faring very well financially under this government compared to the hugely disproportionate funding cuts that have fallen on us in this city and the north-east region. And there's no fairness in that at all. I think that's probably politics at its worst, and again, probably something we all agree on. I could probably go on, but you get my point, I think. Fair choices for tough times, fairness, I think, is at the heart of this budget and embedded in every budget proposal that we've put forward, and I hope that as the debate unfolds this evening, colleagues opposite will at least acknowledge that, and I urge all colleagues to support the budget and to continue to support the leader of the council and press on the government for a fairer funding settlement for Newcastle. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Gallagher?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, on the trade union issue, I mean, I'm a proud trade unionist, I organise the PCS branch at my employer, and I've been involved in some, you know, quite serious negotiations the past few weeks. But I think in these times, it's reasonable to expect the trade unions to make their contribution and to try and reduce their costs to help this council out and the people of this city out. Because these are tough times, I mean, I think we all agree with that. I don't think it helps the way the ruling party conflates the figures such as the actual cut with cost pressures, and try and fix that in people's minds that it's all government cuts when it isn't. I think we all agree, the amount of cut we're seeing from central government's too harsh, the actual amount is bad enough and you don't need to inflate that, but of course you do, you just can't stop yourselves. Plus, of course, you don't seem to count the extra money that's coming in from the government, whether it be for public health, people premium or whatever, so we get a one-sided, cuts-only view of the financial landscape. The leader of the opposition's offered her support to help lobby the government, I hope she'll take over on that and seek consensus in this council. After all, I read a report that the Institute for Fiscal Studies have analysed the information from the party manifestos at the last election, and concluded that the cuts a Labour government would have made would have amounted to only about 0.14% smaller than the cuts the current government is making. So whenever I hear a Labour government spokesman bemoaning one cut or another, or saying, you know, the cuts are too much, too fast, I just ask myself, well, what exactly would your cuts have been? Ed Miliband's view on a Labour government, he said that our starting point for 2015/16 will be that we cannot reverse any cut in the day-to-day current spending unless it is fully funded from cuts elsewhere. Ed Balls, interviewed in the Financial Times, said that on potential Labour cuts, he said, the exercise will be tough and looking at spending in every department, including the NHS. Now, that is worrying. I certainly don't agree with the welfare changes the government's making, for example, the bedroom tax, then again, I was against it when your government introduced it for private tenants. And Labour are now talking about making welfare changes such as stopping jobseekers' allowance unless claimants pass a basic English maths and computing test. If we propose that, you'll be queuing up on that side to attack us as being potentially racist, ageist and so on. So I think that shows that our region has not always gained as much as it should, even under a Labour government, so perhaps we in this council should always try and work together to protect our city from whoever is in government. Cheers.
councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's with a great deal of regret that I note that the budget has got an additional £1.3 million worth of cuts in the adult services area, in four service areas for which IIA's have been provided, and that's after 14 service areas had huge reductions in the 2013/16 proposals. Lord Mayor, I welcome the inclusion of the public health allocations in the council report, and I think really, there's a strong message there for city council and for residents of the city. It shows our commitment to wellbeing in this city, particularly, as the leader said, the £400,000 in 2014/15 and 15/16, which is going to be allocated to grassroots-based organisations. That means that local communities will have the opportunity to make decisions about health and wellbeing in their own areas. And in addition, Lord Mayor, section one of the report also sets out in detail the allocations that will be made, that have been made by the council from the monies from Public Health England, and the split between commissioned services, infrastructure costs and money allocated to the wellbeing fund, all framed around feedback from consultation. I must say, Lord Mayor, that I do reject the accusations about transparency in this year's public health budget. All the information was available either via Cabinet, the Wellbeing for Life Board or on the council's website. But I do welcome councillor Stockdale's offer to have a meeting about the budget, if so wished. Under this administration, Lord Mayor, I think I have to say, as portfolio holder, that our adult services are something we in Newcastle can be proud of. With our partners, we have a wellbeing strategy for the city, we have excellent adult social care services, and that's a real tribute to the hard work of the 12,000 people across our city who care for vulnerable adults. We have our new public health funding, which we're using wisely, and we are doing some very innovative things with our public health funding. We are an age-friendly city, signed up for in 2013. We are moving forward on digital inclusion, and we've launched a consultation on a draft digital inclusion strategy for the council, and we also have cooperative principles at the heart of the city council's new commissioning and procurement plan. That means that 53% of our third-party spend, Lord Mayor, is with regional suppliers, in comparison to a national average of just under 36%. And within the north-east suppliers, 37% specifically relate to Newcastle firms. I have to say, Lord Mayor, these Liberal Democrat amendments, frankly, I'm just amazed, and I wondered why the opposition bothered. They're a miserable attempt to gloss over the impact of the cuts on Newcastle residents. And I cannot help but note that there is no mention of the needs of the most vulnerable adults and children in our city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You'd think, listening to the members opposite, that there's been no recession, no debt problem, and that there would be plenty of money available if only the government would be a little more reasonable. But given that the government has ring-fenced spending on the NHS, schools, pensions and overseas aid, it's unsurprising that local government is facing a bigger cut. And Labour nationally has said that recently, has said recently, there will be no more money for local government if Labour wins the next election, although the distribution will be fairer, and we'd all like to know exactly how that's going to work. You'd also think that the only thing the government's done is cut funding, and very little mention of all the extra grants received, as some of my colleagues... little mention of all the extra grants received, as some of my colleagues have said, except, of course, to claim credit for the achievements that these grants have allowed. So let's not forget the twelve million pupil premium money going to schools, the one point two five million for troubled families grants that's having such huge success, the four point five million from the underspend on youth contract work, the seven million for cycling, the three point five million for local pinch point fund, the ten million from two thousand and fifteen to improve transport corridors, the largest tax incremental scheme in England, the regional growth fund, and the millions of pounds coming for debt for energy efficiency projects and development of district heating schemes. In fact, if we look overall at specific grants included in two thousand and twelve, thirteen and the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen budgets, the council will receive three hundred and sixty-nine million, which is only a two percent decrease from last year. Of course, as the revenue budget is facing very difficult problems and hard choices have to be made, but even Labour politicians believe that reform of public services is required. Chris Leslie, Labour's Shadow Chief Financial Secretary to the Treasury, said recently that long-term and sustainable budget savings can only be made if we think and reform public services while delivering standards that people need and expect. And he went on to say, we are looking not only where the efficiencies are achievable, but how services could be reconstituted to release the cashable savings that are now required. And we're told that Labour will look particularly at Health and Social Care Commission, locating Crown and Magistrates Courts togethers at the same site, and greater pooling of resources among local councils, all of which I think we would support. But in the current budget situation, the only option is to look at every service to see if it's achieving the desired outcomes, if it's being provided in the most cost-efficient and cost-effective way, whether there's any duplication, and whether efficiencies of scale can be achieved by working with partners such as other councils, schools, the voluntary sector, local businesses and others. And the council has made some progress in this direction, but not far enough or fast enough. And there are still some areas where we think additional savings could and should be made, and we give some examples in our amendment. Let's look at some areas where threatened budget cuts have already led to a better service. Last year, both Castle Dean and Chivit View Respite Centres were threatened with closure. By working with users, carers, staff and other partners, the council has been able to achieve a more cost-effective provision. And in particular, at Chivit View, by working with Thomas Hewitt School, the facility will be better utilised and the crucial respite facility protected. There are other facilities that are not being properly utilised in the city. When plans were announced for a Sure Start Centre in High Heaton some years ago, local councillors were keen to be involved in the planning and look at the possibility of the building being used as a community centre, but we were told that wasn't possible. The design of the building couldn't be changed and it could only be used for Sure Start activities. The result, a beautiful, well-equipped building that is empty most evenings and weekends and is now under threat of closure. It's been left to local Liberal Democrat councillors to try and work with the centre staff, the local community and local schools, to look at ways of increasing usage of the building and bringing in funding to maintain the building and hopefully protect the crucial Sure Start services. And there must be other examples of facilities that could be better used to protect vital services. Another area where large savings could be made is the integration of health and social care. Labour councillors keep complaining that much of the Better Care Fund is not new money, but that misses the point. If you look at what the integration pilots have achieved, many are well on the way to making health and social services work together to provide better support at home and earlier treatment in the community to prevent people needing emergency care in hospital or care homes. For example, in Greenwich, teams of nurses, social workers, occupational therapists and physiotherapists work together to provide a multidisciplinary response to emergencies arising within the community, which require a response within twenty-four hours. The team responds to emergencies that are alerted within the community and care homes, and what they've managed to achieve is that two thousand patient admissions were avoided due to their intervention, and they've managed to save a million pounds that's been put back into the social services budget. Another area of the budget that still needs a lot of work is public health. We're told we have plenty of information, but we don't have the information about what we are spending is actually achieving the right outcomes. For example, if we give money to reduce teenage pregnancies, has that been achieved? And for every single service, we need to know what the outcome is, what it was meant to be, and if it's not working, how that money is going to be better spent in future. And I'm afraid we don't agree with the wellbeing fund, because we feel this money could be much better spent. Spreading this money across the city in small amounts for unproven, small-scale interventions does not seem a good use of money, especially when a considerable percentage will be lost in administration costs. Lord Mayor, I urge our colleagues to support our amendment.
Thank you. (applause). Councillor Kingsland?
Lord Mayor, I just wanted to respond to some of the issues that have been raised in the debate so far. I'll start by welcoming the comments of councillors Faulkner and Cott regarding the family services and early years review. And I would like to reassure councillor Faulkner that once the options appraisal is complete, there will be extensive consultation from June, and I hope that scrutiny will be part of that. I agree also with the comments that early intervention and prevention is really the only way forward, and we have had some great success, for example, through our own troubled families programme and the excellent multi-systemic therapy, both of which have been praised by government. Yes, we have had additional funding from government for those programmes, but at a price with the ever-reducing early intervention grant. Also, the pupil premium is very welcome, and some schools in the city have done very well from that, but we can't see that as an answer to our problems, because at the end of the day, it's schools who decide how that will be spent and not us. Finally, I agree with councillor Lower and others that if we could preserve Sure Start, then we should. It's done an excellent job in supporting children and families. However, it's clear that the proposed four million cut in year three is now unavoidable. Yes, we will be working closely with partners, including health and schools, to preserve services as far as possible, but we can't avoid the impact completely. And I would welcome cross-party support to lobby government for extra funding in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause). Councillor Bricky?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just two points I'd like to talk about, please. First is in relation to amendment one, which is providing a library assistant to the community libraries. I've been working for the last year or so together with council colleagues on both sides of the chamber, councillor Pagan and councillor Mendelson, with the group that has taken over Jesmond Library. And we're doing quite well. We've been open now for six months, and I'd like to place on record the very good support that we've had from council officers during that time. We are doing well, but our success is by no means guaranteed. And although it may seem a small thing, having a library assistant for one day a week would make a very big difference to us. So I'd be very grateful if members opposite would consider that amendment. I don't begrudge deputy cabinet members their allowance, but it would make a huge difference to community libraries. The second point is about maintaining the city's environment, four point six in the report. And I couldn't help but notice a sentence that says we will support and encourage positive behaviour, but we will send a very clear message to those who spoil the city for everyone else. Well, please don't fool yourselves, there is a very clear message being sent at the moment to people who drop litter, who break glass, who leave a mess in back alleys, who indulge in antisocial behaviour, who breach their HMO licence conditions. And that very clear message is that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you will get away with it. And let's recognise that that is the situation at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't going to speak actually tonight, but I just felt quite compelled to stand up and say something in response to councillor Taylor when she mentioned about protection this government have placed on health and education. I think obviously this budget is a reflection of their policies, agendas and ideology. And I'd like to just point out, I'm not quite sure what protection that affords to education or health, given that it's actually on a pathway to chaos at the moment. Specifically with the introduction of the Children and Families Bill, whilst I welcome integrated work. And I think what this government's actually doing is removing protection from some children post-September who have special educational needs statements. And I'm just wondering what protection she was talking about in that instance. Thank you.
Councillor Steve Wood?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Conscious in the taking of the time and proof of how it was. First of all, I would obviously like to place on record that I agree with practically every word that's been said from this side of the room, and I actually agree with one or two things that's been said from the other, if I'm honest. But I would just point my comments towards the amendments. I fundamentally disagree with them all, but I particularly disagree with amendment three about the trade union facility time. I won't pass comment on car use, because I don't use a car, I don't know what it costs. But on the trade union side, I should probably point out that there's a declarant expression of interest, if you like, because I spent a lot of years on full-time trade union release, and I realised the good work that was done. I got involved way back in single status, God knows how many years ago. And through single status and through the Service Improvement Plan and the redesigning of jobs and all the rest of it, I honestly, genuinely believe none of that would have happened without mass industrial unrest, without the involvement of the trade unions. There would have been unrest. I personally had two hundred and odd pound in protection every month, as did many of us, but we managed to take the workforce with us. And that was carried out by the trade unions and the management, I have to say that. As I always said, the management would be at Gateshead, we would be in Walsall, and we'd probably meet somewhere in Sunnybaker. So I would be absolutely opposed to any monies being withdrawn from trade union facility time, because I know that the service that they provide to help run this authority. Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would just like really to state on record the situation regarding volunteers. Newcastle City has always had volunteers. Every community has within it volunteers, and I would defy anyone to say anything about that, because that is a fact. It's a fact of life. We here are all, or have come from backgrounds, many of us, from a volunteer status. So having discussions around volunteers taking jobs, which we referred to earlier, is something that I don't think anyone in this council would support. Certainly I wouldn't, and I wouldn't be involved in discussions around doing that. But we have always had volunteers work with us to do things over and above what the council is doing. And that is actually a fact. And if you don't know your community, then you would say things that we don't have volunteers, because we do. I would also like to come back on the point, and obviously someone's smirking and laughing, so they don't, and I thought the tone of the debate tonight was somewhat better than the debate has been in many, many years. Unfortunately, I think it's just going to be lowered. But needless to say, what I will say, Lord Mayor, is that shared services is something that we have been doing as a council for a long time. This year, we have worked and we have done trade with more companies, more councils, more outside bodies than ever before. We have exceeded the targets that we've made, that we were set forward, and we have come in for contracts over and above what we thought we were told from last year. That is a result of hard work. And I would like to place on record my thanks to the staff in the directorate who have worked tirelessly to achieve this and continue to do so. In so doing, jobs are being saved in this council. And that's the mantra, and that's what we are wanting to achieve. I do not recognise, and I will not recognise, the term back office. I've said it with previous senior officers, I've said it in other organisations. There is no staff, back office staff. It's a terminology which I do not think is appropriate. All staff are valued, all staff contribute towards a service that we deliver as a council, whether they work in the back of a room or in the front of the room. As far as discussions around frontline services in relation to environmental services, we listened very closely, as we've done with a number of things in the consultation, and also to members across the parties. And it was recognised concerns were raised about the delivery of services, and a decision was made that this would not follow through into this year's budget, and that has happened. So literally, the frontline services are unchanged. What we are working on in environmental services is a change in the delivery models and a change in the way of working. We are looking at merging directorates and merging parts of the directorate, as you know, in restructuring. We are literally doing what the opposition has said. We are going back to a blank page in the community's directorate to look at the functions that are being done by staff within it and the outputs. It is a challenging role, because it is a new directorate bringing in a large aspect of the work in this city. But we are delivering on that, and we are working not least with partners, but with members. I am very proud of the way we, as an administration running this council, have worked with partners that we may never have worked with before. In some of the libraries, the college are working closely with us in a way which wasn't necessarily the case about three years ago. Dyslexia North East, a small charity, is working with us to complement things. Everyone has had a part to play in that in the community, and I certainly believe that residents actually support the way we have managed these very difficult circumstances. They are not stupid. They recognise where we're going, they recognise there's an abyss in front of us unless there's a change. And I would just like to support this budget and thank members for their contribution, because I think it is valued that we can hear each other for once, and what we're saying is meaningful for the residents of this city.
Councillor Burke?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just actually like to start by paying tribute, if I may, to Nigel Whitefield, who of course sadly died at the weekend. I think Nigel was an absolutely fantastic press officer, always went the extra mile. I know he's highly fought off by everybody who came into contact with him. But I think what we'll probably miss most about Nigel is his absolutely outrageous sense of humour. And obviously, our thoughts with Sandra, the comms team, back as well as most inside the council, and obviously his young children. I'd also like to praise Paul, I think, for his years of service to the council. He has, of course, given the council more years of service than I've been alive, years alive on the planet. But I won't add too much more, because I do fear he might not be able to get sort of with the door this evening if I add too much more. I'm going to probably break what I'm going to say into two parts. So in the first part is to respond to some of the points opposite, and then secondly, explain some of the things and the impact it has on my ward in Denton. If I've sort of got some of the opposition points correctly, I think councillor Cott, Gallagher and Faulkner are all sort of pursuing the line that it's fundamentally dishonest that sort of cost pressures have been described by cuts, sort of as the council administration. But a quick Google showed this from two thousand and eight, and guess which Lib Dem said this? Next year Newcastle gets a two percent rise in grant, but due to cost pressures, we face significant cuts from the penny-pinching Labour government. So of course, Lord Mayor, it's not just this administration that eschews cost pressure as cuts. The second point, I think, we've had quite a few discussions already upon the capital programme, and I think councillor Stone and councillor Taylor in particular were disappointed we've not given praise to government. But I think when they were Lib Dem spokesmen for Newcastle East at the last election, not once did I hear them praise the Labour government for building schools for the future. And not once, Lord Mayor, when we announced obviously the first bit of council house building in Newcastle, did they thank the money from the Labour government. It was, of course, at that point, all the Lib Dem councillors were. So I think sort of on both sides of that, been guilty that sort of we were in the debate. The other point I'd like to make sort of on the general funding issue is actually to praise councillor Faulkner, I think, for his stance on the funding, which I thought was very good. But we do have a slight issue sort of within the Liberal Democrats, that we do have, for example, councillor Allen's speech in which she praised the council tax freeze. But of course, that's one of the main reasons why our settlement is so aggressive, because in Newcastle, we've got a low council tax base. And because the money for that freeze has been top sliced, it means that southern authorities with larger council tax bases get a lot more funding for their council tax frees, in exactly the same way New Homes Bonus works, Lord Mayor, which in fact, the southern authorities, because their council tax base tends to be higher, will receive more funding for the same number of homes built. So therefore, I think there is a slight difficulty within the Liberal Democrats, that they stand against the funding formula, but the reasons why it's unfair, they boast about, which I think does need resolving when they do speak to ministers, or else it does give a pretty varied picture on to whether they actually do support sort of the principles that councillor Faulkner laid out. As for a couple of amendments that was raised, I think amendment five probably was sort of a figure plucked out of thin air. And as for amendment four, I think that's probably all got the hallmarks of a sort of focus headline. But I do think there are some interesting points to consider, I think, especially in the next round of the budget in twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, as to how you do share services. But I did have a quiet smile when councillor Hoddart, who no longer sat here, sort of was complaining that the economic expertise, there was nobody at the council left, but then proposed to get rid of sort of the department that did bring the city deal and the youth contract, which of course, members opposite tend to say are two very good achievements that we have worked with the government well on. As for the impact on Denton, Lord Mayor, there is no doubt that some of the measures will have a negative impact, which are unavoidable, given sort of the scale of cuts that are being planned. But I would say that I think the council has done very well actually to mitigate some of those. For example, bringing Newcastle College on board to help with the library, there's alternative provision for the pool which should hopefully safeguard it, and also things- provision for the pool, which should hopefully safeguard it, and also things on a more local level, such as changes to grass cutting. Although they will be reduced, there has been more input from ward members, it's enabled some areas to be cut more frequently than others, and actually some parts of the ward where you can have longer grass, for example, for those areas to be cut less. So I think good ward member involvement on that. And also, I think some of the more positive aspects of the budget for people of Denton will be things like the living wage, which will boost many low-paid employees who work for the council who live in the ward, and should also help other people, sort of in other professions as well, really get that argument for the living wage. In fact, an awful lot of people who are low wages will benefit from that, and hopefully many people will take the council's lead, many private sector partners and voluntary groups will take the council's lead on that. As well, there's extensive funding still for welfare rights, which I think is very important, that everyone gets the fair share of what they owe. And also bits on the capital programme. Though Denton's sort of within the ward and the way the ward boundaries work, we don't have too many of the big regeneration projects, we do have work, for example, on the matchbox site, which is a great piece of capital investment, that provides support for some of the most disadvantaged people and actually improve their quality of life, as well as saving the council money, which sort of is one of the things that is quite a rare combination to get. So therefore, with an absolute heavy heart, given the impact on some of the unavoidable impact that some of these decisions will have, I do hope colleagues will support this budget. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Strada?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Forbes, in opening this debate tonight in support of the motion, has demonstrated once again that this government's imposed cuts to crucial services are both unfair and relentless. We find ourselves in a situation where we need to reduce our budgets even further, affecting many essential services, and making savings, that euphemistic term which actually means cuts in services and people losing their jobs in a city where unemployment is already higher than the national average, making that unavoidable. However, the council's doing its utmost to do what has been imposed upon us in a fair way, or as fair as possible, and is offsetting the worst by creative thinking regarding policies and service delivery, and we've had many examples tonight. But I'd like to say that this is most evident in the journey we are on regarding services for children and families. Yes, we do have to take 1.5 million out of the budget for family services and early years this coming year, followed by another £4 million in 2015 and 16. That is the grim reality we face. We have a situation where the government takes away with the one hand, and then through the national lottery, which is essentially the people's money, but now co-opted by government, invites us to compete for funding to invest in the wellbeing of nought to three-year-olds in the most deprived areas. How mad is that? Why should the health and wellbeing of young children be a lottery? Why should there be winners and losers regarding the life chances of children? Well, we have to play the game, so we've submitted a fantastic compelling bid to the lottery for up to £15 million over ten years to give babies and young children the best possible start in life. We've done this with partners in the voluntary sector, Children North East, the NHS, and our communities, which we have called Team Newcastle. We've worked our socks off to get this money into the city, and we hope that we win. We are one of fifteen on the shortlist, and there will possibly be only five awards. But in the meantime, we have cuts to make this year, so we are undertaking a fundamental review of family and early years services, which of course includes our Sure Start, which incidentally, and we don't say this enough, our Sure Start children's centres have been rated by Osted as good and outstanding in all inspections. Newcastle is the only core city to have achieved that, and the bar for those standards is rising all the time. The review that a number of people have mentioned will start with an analysis of need across the city. We have fantastic data about need and the impact of Sure Start. We will seek to maintain a universal offer across the city, but provide more where need is greatest, in line with our policy on progressive universalism. We will seek contributions from health, schools, charitable foundations and social investors as part of our shared endeavour in this city to improve the wellbeing of children and families. We will shift resources as available to prevention to an early intervention service that are known to work, so the approach will be strongly evidence-based. Family support services and anti-poverty initiatives will be enhanced. There is a devolved public health budget, which clearly is not fully supported by the opposition, but that will bring some added value according to community preferences and ward partnerships. We'll align our reviews to the ambitious big lottery bid, so we get coherence and more bang for our buck. So councillors, you will get proposals soon. It may be that some well-loved buildings may close, but Sure Start is essentially a way of working, and services will be delivered according to our principles and assessment of need. Consultation will be in the summer on how we deliver this 1.5 million pounds worth of savings, which will not be easy. I still hope that we might pull a rabbit out of the hat to avoid the £4 million cut next year, but that might be a dream, but the reality of a £4 million cut is a nightmare. If we get this review right, however, it should bring down our care costs by preventing the increase in looked-after children. However, we are only too well aware that the drivers, especially of poverty, exacerbated by welfare reform, are against us. The challenges are great, but we will not let this government defeat us, but we long to see the back of it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Mendelsom?
Yes, I think, just to echo a lot of what's been said, the specific point I want to make related to the budget is that we're all pleased the commitment to fairness and social equality in the budget, and particularly the payment of the living wage by the council to council staff and encouraging other employers across the city to do so. And this is particularly important looking forward in Newcastle, because we want to build an economy which is built on decent pay and conditions, on high skills, rather than low wages, zero hours contracts and low skills, that this coalition government seems to be building a future economy on. So I welcome that particularly, and I'm very, very proud that this council is one of the leading local authorities in pushing for the living wage.
Does anybody else want to say anything else? I was very hesitant asking that, but I did get prompted. No, that's it, you've lost your chance. Councillor McCardy, you reserved your right to speak, eventually.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Paul's been thanked a number of times this evening during the debate tonight for his outstanding work and support for the processes that we go through each year around the budget. But can we also, on behalf of council, recognise the work of Mark Kirsty, Nick and the finance team, who've done a huge amount of work to support both cabinet and scrutiny processes, might not be exactly to the scrutiny panel's liking, but have tried to support them in the best way that they possibly can. So can we place that on record, Lord Mayor? And two things which strike me during the course of the debate. The first one is, I think we've agreed that we will offer workshops for all members to help all of us understand better local government finance. It is a complicated issue, and clearly we all need to understand it, we're making very important decisions here this evening. And the other point I want to make before I come on to the gist of my speech, councillor Kane challenged us about the budget book, but it is actually available, Lord Mayor, Member Services, and I understand everybody has been told that it's there. I'm just assuming that that has actually been done. Now to the gist of what's before us today. Never before in local government has local government been hit in the way we are now. And this is austerity with what I think is a coalition twist of the knife, particularly on the most deprived areas of the country. Lord Mayor, we've got unprecedented cuts that are unfairly shared out across this country. The heat maps that are in our papers, actually they're in twice in the papers before you today, show that extremely clearly, and I think we should be really proud of our policy team who've supported that work in pulling that information together. They're being used and recognised nationally by very credible organisations like the Joseph Brown Tree Foundation, the National Audit Office and others, just to show the damage that's being done on the more deprived areas of this country. And it isn't just the North East, Lord Mayor, it's the Midlands, it's the North West, and obviously in London. We're saying in the report that's before us today that Newcastle, if the funding had been distributed fairly, could have had an additional £38 million, if our share was in line with the average across the country. And indeed, in preparing papers for the book council this evening, I guess the other thing we need to say is that the timing of the settlement doesn't help. When the settlement comes in, forcing officers to be working over Christmas and New Year isn't actually helpful to being able to provide the right level of information at the right time, and I think it's a great credit to our officer team that they're willing to do that at times when the rest of us are enjoying holidays. In listening to the radio last weekend, Lord Mayor, there were many religious leaders talking about food banks and how awful it was, and one of the things they said was that we live in the sixth richest country in the world, and it's disgraceful really that we're having to take this level of unfairness in our city. Before us today, we've got the second year of our three-year proposals, which has helped us in being much better planned and prepared for the challenge than at any time previously. And what I believe we've got before us is giving our residents hope. We do have some really challenging proposals, and they're going to be extremely difficult to deliver, and we can only do that if we find new ways of working. We can no longer slice a little bit here and a little bit there, we've got to have a fundamental rethink, and that's what we've tried to do in these proposals that are before us today. And actually, if we're learning from last year's Lib Dems proposals, as some of our colleagues on the other side of the council chamber have said, then isn't that demonstrating a learning council working in a cooperative way? We do, Lord Mayor, need a fundamental rethink in some areas if we want to continue to provide valued, effective, good quality services. And in what I'm going to say tonight, I'm not focusing wholly on the cuts, many of my colleagues have done that, but actually to focus on the good news that we're delivering in this city. We are freezing council tax for another year. That is there to help our residents who are struggling with the increased cost of living that they are suffering. Estimated at £1600, not an inconsiderable amount of money. As councillor Mendelsom said, we're proposing to increase the living wage. It's a huge credit to, you know, to council that we have demonstrated commitment to that. We know, research tells us, that that money that we're giving to our lowest-paid workers will be spent in the local economy, boosting in the local areas, boosting our local economy. And in the main, of course, that benefits women workers. The members opposite talk about pupil premium, but of course, that funding goes directly to schools and doesn't help us. Our capital programme, a number of colleagues have addressed, you know, yes, we're spending maybe not as much as was spent previously, but we don't have the benefit of BASF and a Labour government, we're having to suffer the cuts that are before us today. Lord Mayor, we have consulted and amended our original proposals. We are listening, we are learning, and we are delivering on our commitments to devolve funds to wards with the potential to share those resources over a larger area. And I know that officers will help ward members to do that. We are providing, we have provided before you tonight a cumulative impact assessment to make sure that the cuts across in total, to ensure that those proposals are fair and don't create more inequality, although obviously within that report, colleagues will have seen, there are concerns. So turning very quickly, Lord Mayor, because I'm aware I'm out of time, to the amendments. The amendments amount to about one and a half per cent, so I'm assuming the people opposite are agreeing to ninety-eight and a half per cent of our proposals. I think they're ill-thought-out, undeliverable and on the fringes, so I'll close there, Lord Mayor.
And now call on councillor Forbes to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for an informed and, on the whole, very good-natured debate. It does feel to me that the tone in the chamber has been different from previous years. It feels as though it's more chaste. We've seen much less of the hubris that we've heard in previous years' debates. And I think that reflects the growing realisation that we all have, that the cuts are starting to bite and the cuts are starting to have a very real impact right across this city. And where I think we have found common ground is in the disproportionate nature of the cuts that we face from government, and I welcome the commitment from various opposition members to work with us, to see what we can do to continue to make the case for the city. Let me also add my thanks not only to Paul Woods, but also to Mark Nicholson and his team, to Kirsty and Nick and the directors and the chief executive for all the work that they've done in pulling together a budget in very, very difficult and challenging circumstances. I want to touch briefly on some of the major points that I thought came out of the debate. Firstly, on cost pressures, we have a very clear exposition in Annex Two of the cost pressures that are faced by the council, much more information than in any previous year. And as councillor Burke has so eloquently pointed out, it was always the policy of this council, under the Liberal Democrats, that cost pressures would be considered a budget cut by the government. And so all we're doing is simply following the previous accounting procedures cut down by the former administration. Secondly, on the capital programme, yes, we've spent less than anticipated. It's very bizarre to find a Labour council being criticised for not spending enough, but that's the situation that we're in, and that's because we've found alternative sources for the money. In many cases, we've found ways of funding it through external sources, like income from the Homes and Communities Agency. And that's all to the good, because that means that we've been able to borrow less and keep the costs to Newcastle taxpayers down. And councillor Stone, I think, talked about delays to the capital programme. I can just remind him, he promised a Scotswood Housing Expo in 2008, and then 2009, and then 2010, and then 2012. And the difference between his party and our party is that they demolished homes in the city in a time of economic prosperity, and we're building them in a time of recession. And also, Lord Mayor, also, Lord Mayor, also, Lord Mayor, the previous Liberal Democrats have a shameful record when it comes to capital investment. Look at the £4 million that is spent on the Uswen Barrage, which still doesn't work. People have forgotten about the £1 million spent relocating the green market that then closed a year later. The £6 million overspend on the Waygood Gallery, failure to maintain CCTV in the city, turning the speed cameras off, that's the legacy and the record of the Lib Dems in this council. Now, councillor Faulkner also talked about procurement savings, and there is a real balance here to be made between, on the one hand, packaging contracts up into large sizes so that you can squeeze out procurement savings from them, and on the other hand, making sure that procurement opportunities are accessible to local businesses and local voluntary community sector organisations. We think we've got that balance about right, and I think the fact that more than sixty per cent of the procurement spend of this organisation is spent in the local area is a testament to the way in which we're using procurement in this council to try to support local business and enterprise, and I wouldn't want to see that being squeezed further. We've heard some interesting comments from the opposition about council tax. On the one hand, councillor Faulkner is saying we should have had a referendum to put it up more than the rate of inflation. On the other, councillor Allen is saying that it should be frozen, which is exactly what we're doing. I was out at the weekend in Westerhope, and one of the streets we were knocking doors in was Janus Close. I do wonder whether any Lib Dems live in Janus Close. It seems an aptly named street, it seems an aptly named street for a party which manages to face both directions at once. And I'm disappointed with the response that we've had to the budget from scrutiny, because the comments from scrutiny are all about process. We've had nothing constructive to engage with the council about either the capital programme or the revenue programme and how it could be improved. Complaining about lack of information simply reveals to me that people haven't read the documents that have been provided to them. And at a time when the Prime Minister has started to talk about tax cuts, tax cuts for people, at a time when we are still facing major cuts in the council's budget, I think shows that this government has got its priorities wrong, and it tells me that we are likely to be paying for those tax cuts in the services that are lost in this city. And your party, the opposition party, the Liberal Democrats, are complicit in that at a national level. And at a local level, we've heard nothing from you tonight about the future of the city. We've had nothing about the challenges of caring for vulnerable people. We've had nothing about the investment needed to tackle the deep-seated inequalities in the city. Your amendments are all about political expediency, and I therefore urge my colleagues to reject them and support the original substantive budget.
We will now vote on each amendment in turn, there's five. Right. Yes, I was just going to say that. Right. We'll vote on amendment one first. Is that agreed, or? I didn't think so. Yes. Can you ring the bell, please? Just stay out there, because there's another call. Just stay out there, because there's another call. Right. We'll vote on amendment one first. Yes, yes, twenty-five, no, thirty-six, so that one falls. We vote on amendment two. Do we need to ring the bell again? I will want to. No, you're all right, stay there. Following a pattern here. That one falls, amendment three. Can we vote on amendment three? Can we vote on amendment four? Yes, twenty-four, no, thirty-six, that one falls. And we vote on amendment five. Yeah, whoever it was has come back. Yes, twenty-five, no, thirty-six, that one falls as well. Sorry, my voice has got to go here. Now can we vote on the original vote? Sorry, my voice has gone. Vote on the original recommendation. Yes, thirty-six, no, twenty-five, so that carried. Thank you. Right, we'll move on to item eight, the pay policy statement. I call on councillor Bartlett to move the report, seconded by councillor Hunter.
Move the report, Lord Mayor.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Can we agree that? Item nine, the report of the independent remuneration panel. This is a report from council's IRP on changes to members' allowances scheme. Item ten, the petition scheme. I call on councillor Bartlett to move the report, seconded by councillor Hunter.
Move the report, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hunter.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the sweet somebody. Can we agree that recommendation? Item eleven, questions my members. We've received four questions marked for written reply. These, together with the responses, have been circulated and also displayed in the fire. Item twelve, cabinet member update. Call on councillor Bell to introduce the report.
Lord Mayor, I was looking forward to some lengthy discussions tonight and to be scrutinised yet again, but I think in the interest of time, I'll just move the report. Only one thing to say, or two things to say. One, Lady Wakefield, there's already the sad loss of Nigel, just been mentioned tonight by Michael. He worked very closely with councillor Burke and myself. He was a great friend, a great professional. He will be sadly, sadly missed. It was a privilege to have known him on. The second thing is, Newcastle is open for business. We will continue to invest in the city. And one of the delights that I've had is actually standing on the banks of one of our neighbouring authorities and actually seeing houses come to the ground in Scottswood. It was a great delight, and it actually fills a heart to see that, and we'll see them just filling their banks. Lord Mayor, again, in the interest of time, if members feel as if they want the full answer, please contact me via email and I'll be able to get a response. But I'm more than willing to take questions if their members wish.
Councillor David Wood.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a question to the cabinet member. Welcome to the report on the Walker Riverside. What I would ask councillor Bell is that will he look at two particular items? One item is to perhaps extend the keeling bus along the Walker Riverside to the Enterprise Zone, and thus enabling, even if we have to use some of the workplace parking levy, to get the parking is really serious now, there's no public transport along Walker Riverside. And also, ask councillor Bell, will he look at the possibility of doing something about the I-SO, that is, the Winghamley buildings? And this is something I've been asking, well, we as members have been asking for the last few years, will the councillor have a look at this, to see what can be done? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Woodock. Sorry, did you want to reply then, councillor Bell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Quite simply, yes, I will on both things. I'll have a word with the chairman of the ITA and see if we can do something about the bus. Winghamley, I'm already looking at that. It's been such a success on the North Bank that we want to work with partners to expand. We're seeing jobs created, I see wealth coming back into the east end of Newcastle, young people and older people both getting employment. And I think there's some viable sites down in that area which we'd like to take further.
Thank you. Councillor Woodock, again.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First off, to admit the rights that others have made about Nigel, as a number of you may know, Nigel had a special place for myself, one of two Southampton supporters in the civic centre. That is now one Southampton supporter in the civic centre. He will be a sad miss. Right. It's also good that he does send his report, item three point two, about Tom Warburton's appointment. I know he's been listening to tonight's budget. I'll just point out that normally we hardly have a crossword in this chamber, and tonight has been an exception. I would want to make one point, though. In regards to item five point three, there's the noting, and obviously it's at an early stage, about the combined authority. It has had a bit of a stuttering start, a bit of a Sunderland hokey-cokey perhaps. What in his opinion would be concrete successes from the combined authority after, let's say, one year of its operation when it comes into form?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not in a position to actually comment on personal thoughts about combined authorities. I'm here to comment on the views of the city council and as an elected member. I think there's great, a great deal of work can be put into working together, as been said during the budget discussion, that there's benefits to be gained from working together. What I would like to see is more working practices and on major projects where actually it's boundary-driven. We've just mentioned the North Bank of the town. I have arranged meetings with my colleagues across the North Tyneside to make sure that we can actually join up across the local authority boundary. We've been dealing with cycling, again with North Tyneside, with Gateshead, and actually going out into the west of the city. I'd like to see more joint work. I think there's a lot to be gained, I think there's savings to be made. Measurement of success, time will tell, Tom.
Councillor Keane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Page 243 under sustainability and climate change. I'd be very interested for a quick outline of who's actually on this new sustainability and climate change group, in terms of which officers, whether there's any external partners, and whether there's any councillor, cabinet, deputy cabinet member representation. If I could, I am getting a little bit frustrated with the dilution of this use of the word cooperative, that it now seems to mean in that same paragraph, two cabinet members speaking to each other, which seems a bit strange definition of cooperative council. All good stuff to see that warm-up north, re-temperatures continuing on, but the only new thing, you know, in the last, since the change in administrations, really this Energy Technologies Institute, and it would be interesting to know what the actual aim of that is, because it says things in very broad terms, but what it would mean for the city. And lastly, a more parochial question is, does the council have any plans to redevelop the Shielfield Centre, current Stoddart High Slough buildings along Stoddart Street in Ouzern Ward? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Bell.
Didn't quite catch the last comment, Lord Mayor. Did you catch it? On the sustainability side, I'll provide a full briefing for councillor Keane, because there was a number of points raised, especially on the working group. I'll get back with a full description on that for him. If you could just give us the last question again, councillor Keane.
The last bit was the Shielfield Centre and the other buildings on Stoddart Street. There's persistent rumours that there's redevelopment plans, but I can't get anybody to give me a straight answer. I'd be grateful if you could clarify whether the council has any plans to redevelop those buildings.
On the spot with that one, I am not currently investigating that. I will get back to him with a straight answer in writing, so that everybody knows. Actually, I'll circle it to all council members.
Thank you. Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just on the capital point again, could councillor Bell comment on suggestions that the central station project is behind timetable and is at risk of losing grant funding if it's not spent by the end of the year, and ditto Riverside Dean?
It's the second thing that councillor Stone's mentioned, the Gateway Project. I did read in the press as well that councillor Stone mentioned that it causes him some inconvenience getting to work, I think it was. But I'm sure that's not, I'm sure that's not why he's mentioned it tonight, because it's much more serious than that. The Gateway Project's a fantastic project. It has got major complications, it's working with different partners. Has there been delays? I wouldn't be telling all the truth if I said it hasn't had some major delays, but we've managed to, we've managed to work around them with the partners, and I think it shows the confidence that all the partners have with the city council delivering schemes of such magnitude. I would envisage that we will deliver on time for both projects, as was mentioned.
Councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The cabinet member's aware of the concerns that are on Gosforth regarding a potential red route scheme down Gosforth High Street. I was wondering if he could tell us when he expects any proposals to come forward for public consultation.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor, and I do appreciate that question. The Gosforth corridor has taken a considerable amount of mine and deputy cabinet members' time, and indeed the officers. Consultations have already taken place with members of the public, with the trade-offs, with the elected members, and indeed the MPs. We're making great progress on that, and I'm at the current stage of literally crossing Ts, dot NIs. And two options will be put out for cycling, and we'll be looking further into the consultations and the type of consultations with the general public very, very soon.
Councillor Stockdale.
Just to say that, I welcome the proposals in the report in section seven point four round improvements to Cowgate Roundabout. Could I just ask the cabinet member to ensure that in planning for the improvements to Cowgate Roundabout, we look at removing the entrance and exit for the Morrison superstore off to Ballon and onto the roundabout? Thank you.
Obviously, it was unfortunate that Morrison's made the announcement that they'd reassessed the viability of investment in that, in a Morrison store at Cowgate Roundabout. I'll look at the proposals again with officers, investigate the options, which we will have to do anyway when we're doing the roundabout improvements, and we'll bear that in mind.
Sorry, councillor Sheppard, last speaker, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a late evening, and I'm sure councillor Bell may simply have misspoken slightly. I'm on the understanding that only part of the consultation has been completed for the Gosforth study, which is for the engineering works. No consultation at all has happened for the red route, which was the subject of councillor Gallagher's question, so I'll just give an opportunity to clarify that.
Councillor Sheppard's quite correct. It has been a late evening, and I've actually completed two night shifts as well with, with I'm would sleep in between. So, yes, I may have made a mistake. The consultation will take place with the cycle and the red routes, and will be a full and thorough consultation. It'll last approximately three to four weeks.
Does council agree to receive the report? Right, it's now nine o'clock and the guillotine has fallen, and we'll deal with the remaining business on the agenda as follows. I'll call each item on the agenda, in turn inviting the member whose name it stands to indicate whether she or he wishes the matter to be dealt with and put to the vote without discussion or postponed till the next meeting. But first of all, all the appointments agreed are set out, just seeing that one. Right. Councillor Forbes? There's amendment, councillor Faulkner?
Seconded.
Councillor Graham? Can we vote on the amendment? Yes, twenty-four, one abstention. Oh, it's changed its mind. Can we vote on the motion? Yes, thirty-six, no, twenty-four. So that's carried. The next one, councillor Indalawa? You accepted, then, that's very good. That one's just agreed. Thank goodness for that, what a long night this has been. Thank you very much, everybody. On the whole, everybody behaved very well and stuck to that time.